Good evening. Welcome to tonight's public hearing. If anyone is present planning on presenting testimony, please sign in the sheet in the back of the hearing room so we'll have record that. Today is Wednesday, the 13th of July. The time is six o'clock set for public hearing. All three commissioners are present. Are there any changes to the agenda, Madam Clerk?
No, there are not.
We have some unfinished business that we're going to take up first, so I'll ask if there is a motion to remove unfinished business from the table.
Mr. Chair, I move that we remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Unfinished business has been removed from the table. The first item on the agenda is Application 202-200-211 SPR Vac. Jaren Langston.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Leon, were we going to table this one still to July 27th?
Chairman, Madam Commissioner, yes.
Okay, I'll make that motion to go ahead and table 2022-00211 SPR Vac to July 27, 2022.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is Application 202-102-816-A, May Johnson. We will take a report from our staff, after which we'll hear from the applicant.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. We're waiting for...
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 All right, thank you, Chairman.
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 One moment.
Okay, we're now officially ready. It's not hearing any echoes.
Try that again. Echo.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. The item before you is an appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval of a 100-foot commercial cell tower. The appellant is Louis V. Spiker of Johnson May Law. Mr. Brad Bentley will be serving as appellate representative here tonight instead, and that was confirmed with staff via an email, so just wanted to give you the heads up. And then the original applicant was Josh Leonard of Clark Wardle LLP. So the subject property is located at 5410 West Beacon Light Road and contains 5.35 acres in the rural urban transition district. Surrounding properties are zoned RUT and R2, which is one of our larger lot estate residential zones, and contain single-family homes on larger lots. In close proximity are some newer smaller lot residential developments within the City of Eagle city limits, and that's depicted with the pinkish-purple overlay there. Depicted here are an elevation and site plan for the proposed tower, which will allow for the co-location of up to four carriers, which is one of the requirements of Ada County Code for new towers. The lease area, which is 2,500 square feet in size, will be fenced and screened and accessed from Beacon Light Road. This visual shows existing towers in the nearby vicinity, including one to be removed approximately two-thirds of a mile to the west. It is the removal of this tower plus existing deficiencies in the area that the applicant aims to address with the proposed tower. Here are the propagation studies submitted by the applicant. The first chart shows the existing coverage with the existing facility to be removed. The second chart shows what will occur with the removal of that facility that I referenced, and then the third chart will show what coverage will be once the proposed tower is reinstalled. So you can see kind of the changes in coverage there. Obviously, the applicant can address this more in depth during their presentation. Regarding the appeal, the appellant raises the following four points. First, granting the applicant permission to construct a 100-foot tower at the proposed location violates the requirements under both Ada County Code and the Conference of Plan and the legislative intent based upon which those requirements were enacted by the town. Appeal point number two, Section 6409 of the Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act of 2012 would allow the applicant to increase the height of the proposed cell tower without further or prior zoning approval. Point number three, the applicant has failed to prefer proper -- I'm getting that word wrong -- probative evidence sufficient to establish a need for the proposed tower at the location and height proposed, or that the granting of this application would be consistent with the smart planning requirements of the zoning code. And then finally, number four, to comply with the Telecommunications Act of 1996, the applicant should be denied in a writ decision which cites the evidence provided herewith. So in response to number one, staff, as found in the memo, believes that based on staff's review of the project, as well as comments received from reviewing agencies, the project is found to be in compliance of Ada County Code and the adopted comp plan. Regarding point number two, as this is a standard outside of the jurisdiction of Ada County, staff does not believe it provides justification for the board to deny this project. Historically, Ada County has required new conditional use permits for any increases in the height of existing cell towers. Regarding point number three, a propagation map and written analysis demonstrating the facility cannot be accommodated on an existing or approved tower within a two-mile radius has been included with the applicant's proposal, cell coverage in the area, as demonstrated in the application materials, will be improved as a result of the proposed tower. And finally, item number four, if the board chooses to approve the appeal and overturn the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission, this decision shall be required to comply with federal, state, and local regulations, as is the case with all land use decisions in Ada County. Regarding comments from various agencies that the application was transmitted to, Community and Regional Planner Brent Moore, which is part of Development Services, identified the proposed land use as being compliant with the Conference of Plan as it will serve existing and future residential uses in the area. The New Dry Creek Ditch Company has stated that no structures are allowed within their easement, which is a standard practice of Ada County to confirm that that is the case. Centralistic Health would require an accessory use application for any installation of this tower, particularly if there are any plumbing facilities; there are none proposed with this project. Eagle Fire responded that they have reviewed the application and the applicant must provide them a full set of construction plans prior to construction. Ada County engineer is going to require a final inspection. Marathon Pipeline, which impacts the property, has stated conditions concerning their pipeline, namely to stay out of their easement as well, similar to New Dry Creek Ditch Company. And then finally, City of Eagle recommended denial of the project, but stated that if Ada County approves the application, they would prefer the tower be camouflaged. So that would be something to the effect of like a monopine, pine tree sort of option, some of those you've seen in the past. Regarding comments from the public in general, impacts to visuals of the area, potential impacts of health, and the loss of property values were the main concerns. We have some folks and attendants tonight that will articulate better kind of their concerns with the project. In conclusion, staff recommends that the board deny this appeal and affirm the Planning and Zoning's approval of the original conditional use. And I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions of our staff?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
You go ahead.
Leon, could you elaborate on Eagle? Who it was that wanted us to or was recommending denial and why?
Yeah, Chairman, Madam Commissioner, that's the planning department. We transmit to the City of Eagle for any project in the area of city impact. And as with past applications, they have recommended denial for cell towers and other things, and it's just their preference that we not approve the project based on...
And this is staff? This is their staff?
This is their staff, yeah. And we obviously assume they speak for their elected leadership as well, but...
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
... residential neighborhoods.
Go ahead.
City of Eagle, there's no... I'm sorry. You can't testify now.
I want to save comments for when you're on the record.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
No, I'm sorry, but we're -- this is all recorded, and if you speak in the back and it's not your turn and you're not up at the microphone, we can't get the recording straight. And so we -- please don't do that. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I didn't catch your question as others were talking, so...
Well, my question was, the staff recommended of Eagle recommended denial, but then they asked that if we did approve it, there'd be a restriction, and that would be to camouflage the pole?
Yeah, Chairman, that, yes, exactly. Eagle said, you know, first preference is deny, second is if you're going to approve it, then require a stealth design of some kind. And again, I brought up the monopole -- monopine as a potential example, but I think there are other ways to do stealth design as well, and certainly a good question for the applicant during their...
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I'd like to, if the board agrees, to instruct staff to go back to the City of Eagle and ask them, not only on this one, but on future ones, to give us a reason for recommending denial.
Sure. Chairman, Madam Commissioner, happy to have them state that a little bit more.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions of our staff?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Can you address other elements of our codes, such as the co-location requirement? Is that attempted?
Yes, Chairman, Madam -- or Commissioner, yeah, as a part of the package submitted by the applicant, they attempted to co-locate on existing towers in the area. They did also provide an analysis showing any tower within two miles would be unacceptable for them to co-locate on. And again, I defer to the applicant to state kind of their reasoning and some of the analysis they did there, but yes, that was a part of the materials submitted. They also were required to go reach out to public land owners, and so that's school districts, highway districts, and others to see if locating on their property might be an option, which also was something that they demonstrated wasn't possible. But again, I think they can speak to that analysis and effort a little bit more.
Okay. Any other questions, staff?
None at this time.
No? Okay, is May Johnson in the audience? He is the appellant.
Yeah, Chairman, this will be Brad Bentley, who is representing for the appellate group at this point.
Bentley.
Thank you, Commissioner Beck.
All right, you have 15 minutes to present.
All right. A pleasure. Thank you for having me tonight. Yeah, I'm the one that filed the appellate complaint. I am -- my name's Brad Bentley. I live on 4176 West Morgan Creek Court in Eagle, and I'm building a home just adjacent to where the proposed tower is. Tonight, if you pull up the presentation, appreciate it. First, I want to say I appreciate and respect what you guys have to do day in and day out. I actually spent 20 years in the telecommunications industry, so I was 20 years at -- or 18 at DirecTV, and three years at AT&amp;T as a senior vice president or executive vice president reporting as CEO responsible for fiber build-out. So I know a lot about the importance of infrastructure. I also know a lot about the importance of doing it right and doing it a way that's in the best interest of the community. So what I want to share tonight is this particular application really does fail to prove significant gap in coverage. I can show you places where coverage really is needed. This is not one of them. Sufficient evidence that there's alternative sites if there was a gap in coverage, as well as least intrusive means, and then lastly, a responsibility to protect property value and best uses of property within Ada County. So let me get into the next slide. Prior rulings in the State of Idaho required this two-step. You guys are really familiar with this, which is gap coverage, which I'm going to start, and then I want to get into the next, which is to prove that there are no alternative sites. Next slide, please. Of course, I was a lot of time in marketing, so as marketers, we put together maps like this. If you go to the AT&amp;T website, it says there's plenty of coverage. You can see it's all blue, not just 4G, but 5G. Go to the next slide. Same with Verizon. It's great. It's strong. In fact, in my 47 years, I've never had better cell coverage, although really the only relevant would be the last 20 in which we've had coverage. And the last slide, T-Mobile is the same, right? So all carriers have a really strong coverage. But these are maps. Maps can be altered. Maps can be, you know, as marketers manipulated. What you really need in terms of significant data is one of two, what we call hard data, which is drive data or drop call data. So the next slide is actual drive data. This is the data for all three carriers at the exact site of the cell tower. Now, drive data, you'd need to do a whole bunch of points. I'm just sharing you with one point for illustration. But anything under negative 85 decibels is a strong signal, and you have a great signal at this location across all three carriers. This is what I would call hard data, and as commissioners, what I would be expecting to see from carriers coming in saying that they need to use a gap of coverage. When you start getting beyond, you know, minus 100, minus 110, you start dropping calls. The second form of hard data would be actual drop call data, which you can get directly from an AT&amp;T Verizon. In this case, it's got great cell coverage. So the question is, why are we here? Let's go to the next slide. This is what we call propagation maps. This is the one they shared. This is the applicant's slides, unaltered by my doing. You can see the three colors. Green is in building coverage. Yellow is in vehicle signal strength, and then on-street coverage. This is what they provided back on March 10th during the hearing. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend. I was on business travel, so I couldn't make my defense. What they're saying is they're losing a tower, a Verizon tower. There's a silo that's on Beacon Light that is being terminated that just has Verizon on it, and if that silo goes away, they're going to have a significant gap of coverage. People are going to be losing their calls. Well, the next slide is the propagation map that they've submitted where you lose the tower. As you'll notice, there's still coverage in vehicle and home or in vehicle and on-street. They've lost a little bit of in-home coverage. Well, in in-home coverage, we actually want that to be covered by Wi-Fi, not necessarily cellular. Someone -- because it's expensive to get coverage in-home via Wi-Fi, via cellular. You want it through Wi-Fi, through fiber, and we have fiber optics in this area. And so this does not represent significant gap of coverage. The next slide is what they're showing of, well, if we add the tower at this proposed site, we can add the green, what I've circled in blue. So the two pieces I've altered is the blue circle. You can tell it looks like a kindergartner did it. And what I'm showing in red is actually where they're losing coverage, right? So this is not an ideal location if they were trying to mimic what they might be losing Verizon. But regardless, there is no significant gap of coverage. And so I want to prove two things here, is you have good coverage, and the site that they're proposing does not come close to even giving what they had if they were trying to solve for it. The next slide, I just wanted to play a video here from the March 10th hearing. If you can play video number eight, please.
May, need to check sound on this.
Okay, no worries. Yeah, I don't hear this.
I don't hear sound. At the risk of a lot of echoes, we're gonna maybe see if I can make it work.
Yeah, try it again if you can.
So your chart here may be not reality.
It is so it -- I think the Verizon engineer is probably going to end up doing a little bit with sectors, maybe having one sector a little bit more south and then having two more east and west on the north side. So he may have an azimuth of...
Because my point would be that there's, in some ways, there's not a lot of improved coverage to the west. It's all to the north, again, where nobody lives.
And that was the hard thing that when my compatriot showed you all of the locations that the landowners, we talked, it was farther to the west, right? So we were trying to duplicate the coverage from the existing site as much as possible. Well, no landowners were interested farther to the west that still had close enough to provide service down into where all the constructions mean built. So .63 miles, it doesn't sound like a lot, but you can see here it makes an impact.
Oh, yes, it does.
And so we had to find something that was buildable, and it's better to have something than to have none. It's better to have something than to have none. It's better to have something than to have none.
Obviously, I slowed down the last sentence so we could capture it, but it's not the way we want to be planning. It's better to have something than nothing with almost a nervous chuckle. And the reason behind it is because we don't need coverage further to the east. We have plenty of coverage. All the development happening is closer to 16, and they're pushing the cell tower 6.3 miles further east and only gaining in-home coverage, mind you, because there's in-vehicle coverage and there's foot coverage in the north where there's absolutely no homes. I know that because that's where I'm building mine, but on a 10-acre parcel so that we can, you know, have livestock and other things. And so the question I have to ask is, well, why? And we'll get into that a bit. I think video number seven, if we can play that really quick from Commissioner Roche.
So I do have some reservations about what is the true necessity of this application. So I do have some reservations about what is the true necessity...
I won't -- I'll spare you the dramatic pause of his saying three times, but he said it once. I do have reservations about what is the real necessity of this application. I do have reservations about what is the real necessity of this application. And then the last video, what I want to, why I want to play this is because it's important you have smart planning so that you don't have to put up multiple towers. See, we don't have a line of interest necessarily with a company like Intermax, where they get paid, for the more towers they have, the more revenue they make. Well, as a community and as citizens and commissioners, we have to do smart planning so that we don't have to look at a bunch of different towers. And I think the reason why Eagle's opposed to it, in particular on Beacon Light, is that's a main thoroughfare that they're about to widen, to have thousands of cars. And this cell tower is 33 feet from that road, which is about to be widened by eight feet. So it's right on the road, and it's not a small tower, it's an enormous tower, and it's quite an eyesore, and it just requires us to be smart about how we plan. So if you can play the next video, please.
The location, it'd be nice if it was further west, because they'd get some coverage out there. Again, I was concerned that if there can be adjustments made, so that it actually does provide coverage to the west, that would be nice, because otherwise, we're looking at another tower, maybe further west, up by 16, which would be redundant, it seems.
So it'd be redundant, you know, we'd add, put up another tower, and you see there's a lot of development happening out on 16, and they will need coverage eventually. But even then, there's still coverage in that area as it stands now. So that's my first part, in terms of there's no significant gap in coverage. The next part is, so why, why exactly are we having this conversation, then? I found it interesting that their site objectives was not the concern about Verizon's losing their tower, which even if they lost the tower, I showed you their own map, that there was no lack in coverage. The primary objective of the site is for Intermax is adding a wireless ISP antenna to the proposed tower. So they're adding a broadband antenna, which is not even within the jurisdiction of FCC. And that Verizon is the second tenant. So I'm trying to understand, why are we adding an antenna that's going to have four carriers in this place where the three, all three carriers have service already? And so I don't know the answer to this. I didn't ask the question of the applicant, but I think it's worth you guys asking the question, is why are we really here? Is this about a replacement of a tower, or is this about a new business? Intermax Network is, I believe, a sister company of Intermax Towers, but I'm sure the applicant can share more information on that. Next slide. The last piece I wanted to share is, you know, to the right is the silo as it exists today. You can see how small it is, it's disguised, you hardly notice that it's there. Even as neighbors, we're open to that if we really felt like we needed it. But we're trying to replace a rowboat with a battleship. I mean, this thing is over 100 feet tall with the option to go to 120, and they'll say, we need all four carriers. Well, all four carriers, all the carriers don't need service here. And you'll see that they've earmarked Intermax as one of the antennas that is part of this project. The other thing I'll note is, one of the reasons why the tower has to be so high is the location they've picked, which on the record, they said is not ideal because it's too far west, and not ideal because the topography is about 20 feet lower than where the current tower sits on that silo, which is requiring the antenna to be that high. Now, those say, well, there was no alternative sites, but their process for alternative sites is just to send out letters, and if no one gets back to them, well, then there must not be alternative sites. Well, the Telecommunication Act requires that they actually provide written evidence of denial with significant proof, and so, which I've not seen, as to where they could collate in terms of other sites. This is not the right site. You've heard it from the other commissioners, it's farther west, it's lower topography. If you go to the next slide, in terms of significant proof, sorry, one more though. The Bureau of Land Management's an option. We asked if they sent a letter. They said, we've sent a letter, we didn't hear back. But I spent some time on their website, and it's actually not send us a letter. There's an application process with a pre-application meeting, then you submit an application to the Bureau of Land Management, which would be a better, a better location for multiple reasons. If you did have a gap in coverage, the tower can sit up a bit higher, so it doesn't need to be as tall, and you have the backdrop to the foothill, so it's not as much of an eyesore as it is when you stick it in the front of residential houses. They did not file that application, to my knowledge, from what I asked your clerk. Maybe that's changed since, but they have not done diligence in terms of alternative site, even if they needed coverage, which we've established that they don't. Next slide. Just want to give you a perspective of how far BLM land is. The existing site is right at the tip of that arrow. The applicant proposed site is this .63 miles to the west that you've heard the RF engineer who's in the room talk about, as well as the commissioner saying, we don't need it further west, we actually need it to the east, we need it to the west. That distance from the BLM land to the existing site is 1.3 miles, and is just less than 1,000 feet difference than where they're proposing the current site. So it's not a matter of distance from the existing site. I think it's a matter of what was easiest to accomplish, and perhaps an alternative motive around their own service. Next slide. I think that's all I want to share for now, so I give back a minute and a half. Any questions for me before one of the neighbors comes up?
Yes, and this is a question, Mr. Chair, for either staff or Mr. Bentley. Do we know why they don't want to just replace the old silo site with a new tower on that site? Why are they wanting to move it?
It's being developed. So the land's being developed as part of a residential development, so they're tearing the silo down as part of that, and so that's why they're wanting to relocate. I'm arguing that there is no need to relocate. And you could, and they get the propagation maps by removing that cell tower when they do the drive studies, and there's perfectly good coverage without that site.
And I guess this would be for Leon. Do we have proof, or did we receive proof, since we're a little bit at a disadvantage here, not hearing their original application? Do we have proof on the Bureau of Land Management, BLM land, that they actually did file an application, or how did they reach out to them exactly?
Yeah, Chairman, Commissioner, Mr. Bentley's right. You know, we received a certified, a copy of a certified mailing to BLM as to the pre-app process and other things like that. We don't have documentation of that, but certainly a good question for the applicant. And if that is indeed the way to demonstrate that they were effectively denied on BLM property, we can do that moving forward. We, yeah, we don't have a copy of a pre-app with BLM.
Do we know, is it 1992, the Telecommunications Act?
96.
96, it's old. Do we know in the Telecommunications Act if it specifies that they do a pre-application, or does it just be to notify? Do we know the language?
Chairman, Commissioner, I would have to research that to get back to you. I don't know if it says a pre-app is sufficient. Our ordinance says contacts.
Contact, right.
These folks. It doesn't say to what level of contact. I mean, obviously, we would want someone to pursue that to the utmost of their ability, but yeah, ours simply states contact.
But we need to verify what the telecommunications is.
The specific words of the Telecommunication Act is, decision must be based upon relevant evidence, as reasonable mind might accept as adequate and support conclusion. It needs to be substantial evidence, which means more than a chintilly and less than a preponderance.
Yeah.
Which is from the tele, but you have to show proof. And, you know, to be honest, a month ago, you guys had another hearing about Star, and this topic came up. We sent out letters, and the applicant lawyer, Josh, said, actually, no one really ever responds, and admitted, it's not a great process, and he even joked, if you need help in rewriting the code, I can help rewrite the code for you, which I found...
Thank you.
...interesting. Recently, and another will testify.
That's fine, thank you.
All right, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Could you go back to a slide on the drop call spreadsheet?
The drive data, yeah.
So where, where did you get this information?
That's right at the base of the cell tower, proposed cell tower.
How did you, I mean, did you conduct the measurements?
We did it ourselves. Hank, who's here, there's a device you can buy that, it's quite easy, actually, to get these readings, and so it's right on the hood of his truck, right on Beacon Light, next to where the proposed cell tower is.
And so what are, what are these measurements? Are they in-house or just street level?
This is street level. This is decibel-miliwatts, which is the reading to measure signal strength. The point here is that you can get these data points at all the drive locations, in and out of home. This is an evidence of what hard data looks like. They're numbers, they're not pictures on maps that can be manipulated. This is the stuff that the FCC recently has says, these propagation maps, they range accuracy from 16 to 64 percent, and are advising that you get hard data, which is drive-time data or drop calls from carriers, before we just start putting up cell towers.
Mr. Chair, to follow up with Commissioner Davidson, along the same lines, do you have scientific proof or data or analysis on taking drive-by data, and then what is the required level for that to penetrate to be, have inside coverage?
You would just use real data. You would go take the device in homes and different things, you know, it's not a calculation that you do. This device does a signal, just like your phone does. You could ping what kind of signal strength I'm standing right here, the device is a very similar thing.
Basically, you don't know what the coverage is, not is, for inside.
I haven't run it across all the places, because that's really the applicant's responsibility. But it is available, and so I just want to give example that even a lay-up civilian can grab real data with real numbers versus the pictures that can be manipulated, and why the FCC is requesting that people, through their order, now get real drive-time data.
And then final question. Do you know who Intermax is?
I don't know them.
You brought it up, you don't know.
Well, Intermax, I know from the application, there's Intermax Towers. They're a tower company that leases space to other providers, and when I was at AT&amp;T, we'd lease space. There's many other kind of tower companies out there. The question was, who's Intermax Networks, which is the one doing an ISP internet? I don't know the answer to that. I think it's a sister company, you can ask the applicant.
Thank you. We'll now get a rebuttal from the...
Chairman, so the original applicant is now to speak, just to confirm?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll do a rebuttal from the original applicant. We'll give you the same amount of time.
Thank you. My name's Josh Leonard with Clark Wardle, original applicant, 310 Front, right across the street here. Really quickly, I'd like to buzz through a couple of questions that were asked. The first, the reason for Eagle's denial, or for the recommendation of denial. The reason why Eagle denied it is because they based their review on Eagle City Code, because they, but this isn't in Eagle City. That's just their process. They review it, and they're actually correct. Under Eagle City Code, you, it would get denied.
Do you know why?
Because it's not, it's in Eagle, as was said from the gallery earlier, there's not a, within Eagle City, there's not a residential zone in which a tower can be built. But this isn't in Eagle City, this is in unincorporated Ada County. Sure. And pursuant to the area of city impact agreement, it's Ada County Code that is required there. Go ahead, and let's start clicking through. Just a quick overview, next. Back to the glance, you've probably seen this, this is just a summary of our application. I'd note, both Verizon and Intermax are technically anchor tenants in that they would go up on the tower immediately. There's not a confusion about one or the other being the anchor tenant, they're both. Next. Site, just a picture, next. Picture of what it looks like with an overlay, the site plan, complies with all setbacks. Next. This is our elevation, as was contained in Leon's staff report. We did some photo sims. This is one of the two photo sims. You can see the 100-foot tower with a four- or five-foot lightning rod on it. The poles that you see, the taller of the poles are between 72 and 76 feet tall, depending on topography through that area. So we're about 25-ish feet taller than the existing power poles in that area. Let's do next. It's another angle of it. This is, I believe, looking south, from north of the property towards Beacon Light Road. You can see the tower there in the distance. Reasons why we're here. Intermax has no presence in this area, in terms of, in this immediate area, in terms of its coverage. There are no existing towers that would afford Intermax the ability to provide service to its subscribers in this area, but the bigger reason, and the one that gets discussed the most, is Verizon. After the silo site goes offline, unless this proposed site is approved to replace it, there is a significant gap in coverage here. The remaining towers can't provide the coverage and signal strength necessary to fill that. Next slide. Proposed site, you can see the silo site there, and then where our proposed site, it's approximately 3,333 feet. I say approximately, and then I give you a, like, almost exact number, but that's what we figured out by the GIS of the county. Next. One thing that came up at the last one was the timing of when that Verizon, the existing Verizon site's going to go away. I spoke with Verizon's representative, as well as with the representative of the landowner. The lease has expired. They're on a month-to-month holdover tendency. The property owner is unwilling to renew the lease. He wants some flexibility with when he starts to develop that project, and Verizon needs to secure another site ASAP. The landowner could give as little as 30 days' notice and require Verizon's site to be off there. One of the reasons that the landowner hasn't done that yet is he's, he wants to see this area get a new tower, because it would, this is the only tower that's providing coverage right in this spot, and he doesn't want that to go away for Verizon east of the tower site. So he's allowed them to continue to stay up there while this application is pending. A recommended condition of approval, just so that you can hold our feet to the fire and not, and not take my word for it, I recommend, including a condition of approval that says, won't issue a certificate of occupancy for the new tower unless and until the silo site has come down and Verizon's no longer on that. Next slide. Verizon's objectives, replace capacity, replace coverage, and why is it important? The key here, they, the opponents talked about using Wi-Fi, and that's great. When Wi-Fi is down, the Wi-Fi is down, and 96 percent of Americans own a cellphone. And nationally, 57 percent of Americans rely on cellphone for their primary contact out of their house, for telephone service. That's actually higher in Idaho. It's more than 57 percent. And then, as you can see, 84 percent of 911 calls come from a wireless device. Next slide. The opponent's memo stated that the silo is only 50 feet high. It's actually 60 feet, four inches tall. Much of the height of our proposed tower is because of the co-location requirement. It's because we have to have spaces for two additional carriers. Minimum spacing, the absolute, the carriers prefer 12 to 15 feet of spacing. We've cut it to 10 to keep it at 100, so we don't have to go higher than that and maintain that requirement. Next site, or next slide. Covered this already, the Verizon and Intermax. Let's jump to Steve, our RF engineer.
Chair, Commissioners, Stephen Kennedy. Can we go to the next slide, please? So this is current coverage. In-building, neg 85 dBm. In-vehicle, neg 95 dBm. On-street, neg 106. These are pretty standard levels for showing the service, and this is an RSRP plot. When opposition gave you the RSSI plot, that's great if it was an old analog network, but it's a digital broadband network, so you have to look at RSRP. So I'll have some size going over that with my drive test data. So this is existing coverage provided by the silo. Next slide, please. If we look, if that site goes away, there is a significant gap in service, because we're going to lower the quality of the service in the area. It's going to be a gap, and once again, my drive test and throughput data will show you that. With the proposed replacement site, one thing to note, I changed the antenna system. I worked with the Verizon engineer, and we made some adjustments to make that site to the east cover farther to the west and match up the coverage very closely with the existing site. So because of adding a third sector and changing up some antenna designs, we've got a pretty close to a match. You can go back and look at the slot, the plot on the right, and the one on the previous page. Next slide, .63 miles apart. The next closest site, oh, the other site within two miles, is an existing Verizon site at Eagle High School. So opposition brought up that there could be other towers to go on, Verizon's already there. So taking a tower away and, or adding more antennas to the same site at Eagle High School is really not going to fix the problem. They're already there, and I'll show you a drive date of what saw. Next slide, existing sites, I think you saw this before. So the existing silo, and then all of the neighbor towers that are around it. Next slide. This is the service provided by the Verizon site on the Eagle High School, just so we can make sure that it's not going to provide the same level of service that the existing silo would provide.
I'm sorry, before you move on, Mr. Chair, what's the distance? The distance between those other sites? The Eagle site, and, no, go back. Yeah, so what's the distance between?
Let me go back to the page. If you go back, two more. So the one to the high school was 1.77 miles. He gave it to you in feet. I just have to do a real quick conversion. It's within 1 point. It's within 1 point. See, one was 1.3, one was 1.7, and one was like 2.2. So those are.
Around 2 miles.
Yeah, so they're all two, at least, you know, 1.5 or above, or 1.3 and above. Okay, next slide. I went and did a drive test performed on June 22nd. Just like opposition did, they took a reading. They took a reading at the, from what he said was at the base of where the proposed site would be. I went a little further than that. So I did a few more. So I looked at RSRP and RSRQ. Broadband digital networks, you have to look at those two readings to get an understanding of what, how a broadband data network's going to work. Then I also did speed tests. I looked at latency and throughput from a Verizon phone and a T-Mobile phone at these locations. So coverage and quality on broadbands, based on RSRP and RSRQ instead of just RSSI. RSSI, received signal strength indicator, is not the way to look at a digital network, because you have to provide a certain level of throughput, even at cell edge. So throughput's a good indicator of network performance. Throughput and latency are measured to evaluate the quality of the network. Next slide. So like I said, I did just a few more spots than that one spot. So if you look at the plot, I've taken quarter-mile, half-mile, three-quarter-mile concentric rings around the existing site. And I went out and I took readings at all the locations you see pins at. So that's the data I went. I went and I went around. I looked at it. It's a bull's eye. Let's see what's going on. So instead of one data point, I gave you quite a few more. Next slide. Like opposition states, scanner data, drive test data is fact. So here we go. So this is existing. Remember, Verizon has an existing site. That site goes down, there's going to be a negative impact. I'm going to show you that in a way. But, so we look at RSRP, excellence, greater neg 85, goods, 85 to 95, fares, 95 to neg 106. 106 and beyond is poor. We look at the RSRP currently for Verizon users in the area, based upon that previous slides map, we're doing pretty good. We got 17 data points showing Verizon's doing pretty well. There's only, only one that drops down into fare. Everybody else is excellent and good. If we look at RSRQ, not quite as good. It's a little shorter site. It's about 60 foot. So it's not going to be quite as well. And the RSRP, we're starting to get out to cell edge for a lot of the users in this area. So we're going to see a lower RSRQ level. Now, if you look and kind of see the RSSI, I went ahead and plotted it next to it. RSSI, we're seeing, you know, 20 to 25 dBm difference between what the RSSI is stated and what the RSRP is. Once again, RSRP is what radio engineers look at for coverage for broadband data network. RSRQ is the quality level. Next slide. This is T-Mobile. So T-Mobile's not on the silo. T-Mobile's not on Eagle High School. T-Mobile's on the other sites that surround. Now, let's look at T-Mobile. So opposition stated, oh, T-Mobile has great service. AT&amp;T has great service. Look at their maps on the website. Not quite so well. So T-Mobile, we show a lot more in fare and a lot more in poor on RSRP. On RSRQ, we pretty consistently show poor. And then, so if we were to extrapolate a little bit, if you go to the previous slide, there's the Verizon site, the silo, right now. Great. If that silo goes away, or when that silo goes away, and we lose that, let's flip to the next slide, that's what we're going to see. Not exactly. It's just, I'm extrapolating a little bit, so please bear with me. But we've got sites that are farther away covering that area. They're not going to do as good a job. So we look at T-Mobile and we go, oh, holy cow, that's significantly worse. Once again, like opposition says, drive test data, scanner data shows you what it's at. This is the 17 data points I took on that map, and it shows a whole lot worse for T-Mobile. All right, next slide. All right, so I did a throughput test, throughput and latency. So I went in, I added, or had Speedtest.net app on my Verizon phone and my T-Mobile phone. Verizon as is, with the existing site on air, getting pretty good stuff. They're meeting the exceeding 4G LTE network on device. They're getting up into the 5G levels and download and upload speeds. So, pretty good, right? It's a site. The existing site covers the area. It does a great job. Let's go to the next slide. There's T-Mobile's drive test. So that's the throughput, and that's the latency. You notice a big difference. T-Mobile's not doing as good a job in the area because the sites are farther away. So if we take away the Verizon site, and we don't allow the proposed site to be built, we're going to be seeing some significantly worse quality and coverage and throughput for that area. So we go to the next slide. So the area in the test shows good current, good service for Verizon customers, currently great. You know, they're working off the network. Scanner data shows AT&amp;T Mobile do not have good RSRP and RSRQ in the area under test. T-Mobile and AT&amp;T are on the other various towers around the area, except for, I believe neither one of them have anything at Eagle High School. Well, RSSI is important reading. It is. It's something we've used for years. I've been doing this for a long time. Read RSSI for a long time. But, once we move to digital networks, RSRP and RSRQ is how we look at things. So if this site is not allowed to be built, and when that other site goes away, there will be a significant gap in service. It will be a negative impact for Verizon users. Next slide. I think I'm almost out of time. I stand for questions.
All right. Any questions of the outcome?
No, at this time.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, this might be more for the council, but, so why not, well, how far did you go to look into the locating it on the BLM land and other co-location considerations?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Not very far. And the reason is, it didn't work for the radio frequency. The only reason we reached out to BLM was because it's required in Ada County Code to be included in a complete application. The application process that they described, that's not required anywhere, not by the Telecom Act. The only thing that requires us to reach out to government, governmental entities that control land that we could put a tower on is Ada County Code. And the appellant found it kind of funny that I offered to help you with your code. I'm helping to tell you how the industry works. Us mailing a letter to BLM, just, which is what's required by code, just isn't how we do that. It is an application. It's a process. We'd be happy to share those insights in the course of developing new code requirements.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now have anyone that wants to testify. I'll give you three minutes. One-minute wrap-up. We have a number of people signed up. I'll just take the list, the list that was from online first. Are there a couple that want to testify on WebEx?
I have no one over WebEx.
No one on telephone?
No.
No one's on telephone either. Okay. We have Stephen Kennedy? Oh, that's you. Okay. All right. Okay. Vivian Lockery?
I put them in order?
Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman.
Okay, good.
I'll wait till we get.
Oh, sure. Sorry.
All our technical things in order.
Which, which video are we looking for?
You get, you get three minutes. Once, I guess, they get you loaded up.
Can we put the speakers in order in the same deck?
Okay, my name's Vivian Lockery, 2211 North 19th Street, Boise, Idaho. I've been a resident of Ada County for 28 years. The Ninth Circuit Court holds that the proposed tower site must be least intrusive. So if building a tower at the applicant's proposed site will later require an extra tower to be built closer to Highway 16, that would otherwise, otherwise not be necessary, then two poorly placed towers is certainly more intrusive than one properly placed tower. Therefore, the applicant's proposed site does not meet the standard of least intrusive as defined by the courts. Next slide, please. So even Mr. Leonard has stated similarly and shown here, in a, this was in a paper published on the state of Idaho's website, that we do require a tower applicant to provide detailed information on the process used to select the subject property for a tower, apply the least intrusive means test. And can we please play video number 10?
It's that it's, there's a gap in coverage, a significant gap in coverage, and that this is the least intrusive means to close that gap.
So, next slide, please. Oh, I'm sorry, that's, is that the end of? So the Telecommunications Act does allow local governing authorities to deny the application, provided that a suitable alternate location exists. In summary, number one, a single properly placed tower is less intrusive than two, two poorly placed towers. Number two, the Ninth Circuit Court holds that the tower placement must be least intrusive means possible. Number three, the applicant's site is not the least intrusive possible. They need to explore the BLM option, and they need to more diligently pursue other options. And number four, the Ada County is empowered to uphold the appeal and deny the application. I also wanted to expound on Commissioner Roush's, after he expressed reservations about the true necessity of the tower. He went on to explain that there's internet and wireless in homes in the area. So the only time, and these are his words, "So the only time you are not connected to the internet are times when you're in your car or out in your backyard," which by there, the applicant's map seemed to have sufficient coverage. So you have full authority to deny this conditional use permit based on location, based on aesthetics, aesthetics, and this tower is neither necessary or reasonable. I urge you to deny the original application. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have William Lind.
Go ahead. Good evening. My name is Bill Lind, and I live at 12097 West Rice Road in Starre, Idaho. I want to talk about the Ada County Code. And the part of Ada County Code I think's most important in this situation. And it includes protections for private property in Section 8-1-2, item E and F, defined standards. Which include, I think, you can go to the next slide. E, ensure the most appropriate use of the properties. F, protect property rights and enhance property values. Next slide, please. If we go to 8-1.9, this is, this is where it's critical. It's preservation of private property rights. This title shall be interpreted to equally protect citizens from the undue encroachment on their private property by their neighbor's use of their private property, and equally protect each citizen's right to use their property without creating an undue burden upon their neighbors. Obviously, this tower creates an undue burden to the people who are going, who are living in this area. And in this, in this 8-1-9, preservation of private property rights, there isn't anything in here that says, well, if an engineer comes up here and says there's a gap in coverage, we set aside 8-1-9 and say, oh, well, private property rights and preservation of private property of neighbors' rights to a proposed project all go out the window. And also, if an attorney that's representing a telecom or wireless tower company comes up here and says, well, you know, it's more important that we take care of Verizon and/or T-Mobile than it is holding, withholding, holding up 8-1-9, which is to protect each citizen's right to use their property without creating an undue burden upon their neighbors. That's why I ask you to deny the application, the original conditional use permit and uphold the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
So you're saying undue burden. Could you elaborate on that a little bit? What exactly is the burden?
To me, the burden is the appearance and the presence of the tower, extremely close to homes and extremely close to a street. And this is also, the thing is, is the city of Eagle says, they have in their ordinance that you can't build, put up a cell tower in a residence area. The thing is, what I see the applicants doing is, because they're running into roadblocks with the cities, placing where they want in the city of Eagle, they're coming to you in order to do an end around in that area.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You, do you live close to this cell tower?
No, I don't.
So it would not place an undue burden on you?
Not me personally.
So you're testifying on behalf of possibly placing an undue burden on someone else?
Yes, the people who live in that area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay. John Rapp? So, John, you have three minutes.
Evening. My name is John Rapp, and I live at 7707 West Vallejo, Boise. Would you play this video two, please?
Just one second.
Okay.
All right, gotta go find it again here. One moment, everyone. Sorry.
Okay.
You were the appellant on the tower at the Birds of Prey.
Yes. Yes, I was the appellant.
Soon as we wrap, tower, video two, you said?
Yes, video two, please.
For a rational person, you look at it, you think, okay, it's going to affect property values. And I'm in that same boat. For a rational person, you look at it, you think, okay, it's going to affect property values. And I'm in that same boat. For a rational
Okay, that was my recording there. So, for a rational person, as the person says, to look at this and you think, okay, it's going to affect my property values, and I'm in that same boat. But for a rational person, despite acknowledging that our rational person would agree that there is a negative impact on the property values, Mr. Leonard then goes on to present information that is contrary to the rational consideration, including efforts to undermine the credibility of evidence presented by the opponents as being outdated. Would you play video three, please?
The opposition's evidence that's in their memorandum, there's three studies. They're between 18 and 37 years old. A HUD reference guide that expired in 2012 and is irrelevant here because there's no homes within the fall area, quote-unquote, fall area. And then a 2012 internet article.
So I guess you couldn't see the video, but what Mr. Leonard is characterizing as outdated is perhaps more fairly represented as time-tested. This is not outdated evidence as Mr. Leonard would have you believe. This is time-tested evidence that any rational person would understand as being accurate. Mr. Leonard then goes on to challenge the broker letters as being unlawful, and my neighbor will speak to that point next. However, before I leave you, and please allow me to share these quotes from licensed real estate appraiser, Robert Hefferman, from February 2012. Would you please go the next slide, please?
Mr. Chair, is this appraiser a local Ada County appraiser?
I don't know. I just know that that's what he said.
When you're presenting this as testimony?
Yes.
Chairman, any questions? I'm not sure which slide is next.
I'm sorry. Please do.
Please don't talk out in the audience. This is being recorded, and we can't pick it up, and it is a problem with our recordings.
Yes.
If you need to talk to someone, Richard, raise your hand, and you can go talk to Richard. We're not set up here to do multimedia events here. We're supposed to be getting public testimony and not a bunch of videos and trying to set up multimedia, so let's just stick with your heartfelt, what you know personally, how this cell tower location affects you. That's what we want to hear tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Do I have a little bit more time because of the video?
No.
Okay, thank you very much for your attention to this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, we do have Jordan Miller ready with the presentation next, if that's someone on the list.
I would like to speak to undue burden. It was the question you asked earlier.
Well, you haven't been called yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we have a process here. Books tend to want to usurp the process.
We have people that have signed up, and the next one is Hank Allen. Is Hank Allen here? Okay, sir. Thank you, and let your testimony to this particular site and how it affects you.
Well, so, I live right down the street. My name's Hank Allen. I live at 687 West Rush Court. I live approximately about a mile and a half down the road, and I travel Beacon Light Road probably twice a day. I'm a real estate agent. I show a lot of houses. I know this is going to be an undue burden. Most of my clients, when they see a cell tower, they decide to either move on, they move out to the country in these homes to be away from this stuff. And for me personally, it'll cause a huge undue burden. The last cell tower that was installed put me into AFib, just got out of the hospital, and had an ablation surgery three months ago. So, anyways, don't want to get into that. What I really want to get into here, I had something with the electrical engineer here, Mr. Kennedy, he showed you exactly what I wanted to show you guys. And so, when he's talking about the RSSI, right, and he said himself that that is old analog signals to make a phone call and a text, and there's plenty of coverage, that is covered under Title II, which is covered by the Telecommunications Act. When you move into Title I, which is digital broadband, which he pointed out, is not covered by the Telecommunications Act. We don't want digital broadband wirelessly in that area. He showed you his maps, finally we get the information from him, and he showed it yourself, that we have coverage from all three carriers to make phone calls and texts. When it comes to digital broadband, Title II, we want that hardwired to our houses and have the option to turn on a Wi-Fi and have high-powered internet, right, or broadband internet, not through the wireless cell towers, right? He gave you the information, he showed it to you, so I don't need to show you anything else that I have here. And now, one of the other attorneys, he said that we need to put a code together. I think that's a great idea, really good idea. So, the citizens of Dalton Gardens up in northern Idaho have been working for the past three years with local land use attorneys and federal land use attorneys to write a wireless ordinance to find balance between what the FCC, or, excuse me, what the original '96 Telecommunications Act's intent was and providing good service so we all can have cell calls and send text messages, right? So, what I have here that I'd like to submit into public evidence is a copy of their ordinance that was just adopted by Dalton Gardens two weeks ago. I think it's a really good model, and it'll help. So, if Ada County could adopt something similar to this, I think we will eliminate a lot of these hearings, and it'll kind of clarify a lot of this information that we're going over right now.
Mr. Allen?
Yeah.
Did you bring that with you tonight?
Yeah, I did.
Do you want to submit that? And we'll have to add-
Actually, I have quite a few copies, yeah.
Yeah, we'll add it as an exhibit.
All right. Let me give you one. And then I also have here, actually, I hear you have another one. Here's a third one. Then one other thing, when I talked to the appellant earlier, if for some reason there was any kind of a legal repercussion, he's willing to cover attorney fees to have cell tower attorney Andrew Campagnelli come and represent Ada County, should there be any kind of backlash, if you decided to find in favor of the appeal.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
You could ask him later when he comes back up.
Okay. That concludes the amount of individuals who've asked to testify. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this issue? Okay, go ahead.
May I?
Yeah, come on up.
I apologize for approaching the bench earlier. I was confused. Okay, so-
Can they just state your name for the record?
Say your name for the record.
My name is Jordan Miller. I live in the very first home off of Lane Wood. We would be directly in front of that cellphone tower. Can we just skip ahead to the image of the proposed tower? It'll be two slides ahead. Okay, so, this is what was, this is my front porch, so skip ahead once more. This is what the cellphone tower looks like from my front porch. The vantage points that were provided to you by the applicant came from very far away, from the north and the south, and in my humble opinion, this obscured the true burden that it will place.
This is a simulated picture, then, correct?
Drawn to scale, via graphic rendering. But again, I live much closer to the tower, so this vantage point is right there. That is my home. If you can go back, please. Okay, so, I'm going to go ahead and just skip the videos here and talk to you about my personal experience. When people don't like something, it translates to less demand. The applicants have stated that this is going to have no, actually, go to the next slide, that's more impactful in the background there. They've stated that there will be no effect to property value. If someone doesn't like something, there is less demand. It doesn't really matter what the data shows, right, because you're dealing with public perception. So, not only is this going to inhibit our lives on a daily basis, we're in this area on a third-generation family farm. We can't believe the development that's gone on in the area around us, and we are just trying to live a happy, peaceful life. This is an obstruction of that. Not only will it affect our property values, but we own an organic farm, and we cater to health-oriented individuals. Again, data aside, these are the people who unplug their wireless modems at the end of the night so that they're not affected. Our business is going to be absolutely crushed by erecting something along these lines in our yard that, you know, basically towers over what's supposed to be an organic, all-natural agricultural area. This was the original intention of the acreage north of Beacon Light, and when you look at the map, the intended area of coverage, there are no homes here. So, the debate related to coverage outside, inside, there is no inside, right? There are homes, people who farm corn to feed their neighbors in trying times, and we don't care about having coverage, right? And then finally, you know, a five, you know, a tower of this nature is just absolutely going to demolish our customer base in addition to decreasing our property value. So, approving this tower may serve a major corporation, but it's going to crush a third-generation family business that's been in the area for over 50 years. And on those grounds, I implore you to please reconsider. The BLM land is just down the road, and it is a suitable site.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Question of staff, do we know how many houses are in the surrounding area?
Chairman, Commissioner, no, I don't have that number. That's something staff would have to go research for you.
That's what I was wanting to get to, is a proximity map with towers and homes within a 10-mile radius, so we'll ask for that at the end. Yeah.
Okay, well, that concludes, unless there are, are there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak, didn't sign up? Okay, Mr. DeHos. Are you in favor or opposed to the application?
I'm for the, holding up the appeal.
Okay, go ahead, state your name.
My name is David DeHos, 1116 South Vista. Became an expert in this over the last two years. One of the things you failed to mention, why it will crush your little farm, is because we know that these towers kill the pollinators. I've interviewed the top-
Mr. Chair, I'm going to ask you to stick to the issues, and you know very well that we can't take up health issues, environmental and health issues.
Well, it affects the aesthetics and it affects our property value.
Then stick to what we can take up. You've been, this is not your first rodeo, so-
Right.
You know, and you've been warned about things like that, so stick with what we can deal with at this level.
Okay, that's just another reason why we create the bill. Okay, so, the other reason we ask is about why did Eagle keep it out of their neighborhoods? Because Eagle's going to put fiber optics to the premises, the smartest way and safest way to put wireless broadband. The applicant is a wireless broadband, that's internet, that's watching your Netflix, getting your email. It's not cell phones, cellphone calls. They've mixed data to approve their application. Why would Intermex want that tower? Well, if they can get another person to locate with them, Verizon, that's going to pay their cost for that tower, and of course, get a reoccurring revenue. It's kind of a land grab, what we talked about before here previously. Many people are seeking, how many towers can we put up? Because that's a great way to get reoccurring revenue. So, the smartest thing is, of course, broadband in the ground. It's safe, it's secure. So, again, I think it should have been two different applications, really, one for wireless broadband, which will be taken care of when Eagle puts in their wireless broadband network. The other is, of course, just absolutely aesthetics and next to these homes, and we do know it decreases values. As we've mentioned before, it decreases home values and property values, and from that alone, you can deny this application for those reasons. That's really pretty much the gist of it. It's pretty simple. You should deny this application for those two reasons. People have the right to their private property, to do what they want, and these farmers, the same thing, they need to protect their property, and that will demolish their property, having that next to them. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions of Mr. DeHos?
Not this time. No, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will allow a rebuttal from-
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I will state for the record, we did get a request from the original applicant to respond to new information. However, I know our zoning code does only reserve rebuttal for the applicant or the appellant of the current application, but do you want to state that for the record?
Okay, and so, we are, we'll hear a rebuttal, a five-minute rebuttal from Mr. Bentley.
Three, five? Three, two, three.
Is Mr. Bentley here, and do you want to give a rebuttal?
We've got a full agenda tonight, so let's make it-
Thank you. I'll be honest, this is a bit of an emotional issue for me. I moved to Idaho two years ago for a better life for my family, and to be able to live my values more freely. Right where that tower is, where you make the right turn, is where I'm building a house on 10 acres of land to have horses and cattle. This tower is what I'd be viewing from my backyard and deck, and one of the many reasons I left California was leave those things behind. The truth is, and I've lived in this industry for a long time, I have never had better coverage in my entire life. I have Verizon, my wife has AT&amp;T. The issue about in-home coverage, that is a real issue in major metros. They want in-building coverage because if you're in the building, you're not connecting to people's Wi-Fi, you're in and out, and you drop calls. But for all of us who are at home, you're connected to your in-home Wi-Fi, and the device knows to switch from cellular to Wi-Fi because it's a better signal, and it gets, it doesn't require to use up all your cellular data. And wireless companies, we count on that happening. There are no homes in here, and in-home building coverage is not the issue. And broadband coverage, you know, I'm still not clear as to why. It feels a bit of a shell game. They came saying, well, our primary tenant is Intermex Networks, we're going to put a wireless ISP. That's not cellular, it's a wireless-
Are you rebutting? It sounds like you're just repeating your first-
No, I'm just, I'm just, no one ever asked, no one ever asked them about. The shell game, madam, it feels like it's about Intermex Networks, then they came up here and they go, no, it's about T-Mobile. Well, Verizon's losing coverage. The whole presentation was about T-Mobile's data, and they never brought data the first time around. Now, all of a sudden, there's data, and now they want to come up here and tell you, no, T-Mobile's the problem, not Verizon. You know, I feel it's misleading, it's disingenuine. Those slides they showed are what the cell tower would look like at a half-mile away versus what, that picture was literally from her front porch photoshopped in. I've seen prior things, well, ours was photoshopped by an engineer, so it must be better. Anyone can Photoshop at the dimensions. That's her view from her front porch, and I live just like 300 yards from where Jordan lives. And this is, this is not why I came to Idaho. This is not what this community is north of Beacon Light, where it's supposed to be a more rural area, and this is not in the best interest of our community.
Mr. Chair, you stand for questions? So, if one of your arguments is decrease in home value, you haven't built your home yet, right?
I'm building it right now. It's just finished framing.
Okay, so, when you bought your land, your property, did you get a discount, or you didn't know that this tower was going in?
To that point, not only, I didn't get a discount, I bought 40 acres and I subdeveloped. One of the people, a good friend of mine, was going to build his home there, he pulled out because his wife's like, I'm not building a home next to a cell tower. And I tried to tell him, look, it's not final, we're fighting it. They have denied building their home, and they're good friends, he's in a Bible study of mine, because of his wife's concern about that cellphone tower.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant?
No.
Okay, no. All right, if there's no other testimony, no other rebuttals, I will close the public hearing on application 202-102-816A, Mae Johnson. Okay, the public hearing is closed. Set up for discussion with the board.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'll kick it off.
Kick it off.
Yeah, I think staff isn't probably going to like this or anybody else, but I'm really looking at tabling this. I just feel like I'm not in a position to make the final decision on this yet. I think I'd like to table it and instruct the applicant to do more research on the BLM land and land that's closer to 16, and bring that information back. I don't have enough evidence here today that they've done their due diligence, that this is the right location, and they can't locate on BLM. We changed our code two years ago, two and a half years ago, to make sure that all of the applicants did their due diligence on federal land, state land, and then we included even county land first, and like ACHD, any kind of public right-of-ways. So, I want to make sure they've exhausted that, and I don't think that they have. At least, I'm not satisfied yet at this point. But I also want to understand, we're not, as a Board of County Commissioners, telecommunications experts, and we get inundated in these meetings with all of this data and lingo and RSRQ and RSRP or whatever, this and that. And that's just a, you know, people putting in their own language and their own data, and we don't know really what that means. And we've asked staff in the past to be ready, that we need to hire a consultant who is unbiased, who's an expert in this, to take a look at propagation maps that have been presented. And I think this is a great place to start with that process, because we were presented with what seemingly looks like great evidence on both sides, right? And I'm not in a position, I'm not, again, a telecommunications expert to make that call. So, we have set aside some funding to be able to do that, to hire an expert who is, doesn't have skin in the game. So, I would also ask that, for the next meeting, that we have a visual, a map, a proximity map, that shows, let's say, a 10-mile radius, draw a circle around the proposed site, 10-mile radius showing us not only the cell towers that are there, the carriers that are on those towers, as well as the homes in that area. And then also, if you could add, Lee, on any applications for subdivisions that are in queue, would be really helpful as well. And then, I'd also like to know, maybe you can answer that tonight, but who's co-located right now on the silo tower?
Chairman, Commissioner, I believe it's a standalone carrier on the silo.
Okay. All right. And then, I would also like us to explore the difference between, in the Telecommunications Act, I think we need to be really clear about that language, right? And I think our attorney has that, to go back and take a look at that. But also, I think we need to look at the difference between wireless broadband versus tel cellphone towers, and make sure that they're both included or they're not, and we need to have a legal opinion on that as well. And let's see, I think that's all I've got right now. Oh, and I would, I would leave it open, I'm sorry. I would leave it open for the appellants to come back with any evidence that they have of their land values being diminished by this, whether it's a statement from someone who pulled out or whatever you can provide, would be really helpful for the record. Okay, so, and if you want to talk to a real estate agent, for example, or show evidence that properties around cell phone towers have been reduced in value, that would be helpful. So, I'd like to leave it open for that as well.
Leave it open for public testimony or for written comments?
For, I think, well, I don't know- For, I think, well, I don't know. What do you think? Maybe brief written, I think...
I think written comments would be, would be preferable, and if we want to, if we want to take public testimony, we should do it at that point.
Chairman, Commissioner, could I just clarify one of the requests? Are you saying you would like a consultant to look at this particular application before a follow-up hearing?
Yes.
All right, so if we're planning to table this, we certainly want to consider the amount of time necessary to get that consultant and go through that process.
Yeah, I think this is a perfect, perfect one for us to start with that practice, because we're sitting up here going, we're not scientists or telecommunications experts, so...
Well, I think one additional tidbit of information would be the actual rationale that the City of Eagle uses for their denial.
Yeah, exactly. Whether it's really broadband, they're, they're putting in fiber or it's other reasons, that would be good to know.
Because we didn't have that tonight. All we had is they wanted to put a pretty tree up there if, if we chose to.
Okay. So what do you think, a month? You want to give us a date?
Chairman, Commissioners, I, I would be hesitant to think we can get a consultant and a review in 30 days. I would probably push for 60 days.
Can you give me a date?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we have another public hearing, I believe, on September 14th.
Okay.
Network.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna make a motion to table...
I'll accept the motion.
202-102-816-A, Johnson, May, to September 14th, 2022, to take into considerations all of the things I just listed on the record. And this will allow submission of documentation, but no public testimony, or you want limited public testimony, Mr. Chair?
I suggested that we take public testimony if we chose to at night after review of the documentation.
We do that? And we have to make our decision now on that?
I think you need to make a decision whether to close it...
Yeah, we could close it to public or not right now. I think we, you know, written is fine. I think people want to show up and hear our explanation, that's fine, but I think, just leave it at written documents, so just make sure that what you submit is pretty clear and concise. Okay? And we'll review all of these things on the record when we come back.
And did you request the map of how many residences are within it?
Yeah, that's in, that's in the request, along with the actual rationale that the City of Eagle uses.
I think, yeah, total number of houses, you know, the actual customer demand is something worth considering, you know, just based on the testimony I've heard here, I, I think, you know, people, there are a lot of people moving to the rural areas because they don't want to see the cellphone towers, and they're willing to maybe have slightly diminished service just for the benefits of living in the area. So it does make me wonder about how many residents are affected, what the actual demand is, and if that's something we should be considering, that certain areas of the county may be underserved, that may be by choice of the resident, so. I'll go ahead and second that motion.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, we have one more table item that has been put back on the table for discussion.
Do you need to open the public hearing on it?
Yes, I'll, I'll open the public hearing.
If we don't, I don't know if we need to, but I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Well, we're gonna table it, right?
Yeah, to table 2022-00185-ZCDA-MSP, VAC Matrix Construction, to August 10th, 2022.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
If you put the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we're, hour and a half into the meeting, we're in new business now. Okay, new business, first business. I'll open the public hearing on application 202-201-086-VAC-AC, Raquel Kenley. I'll have the staff give us a presentation.
All right, Chairman, Commissioners, project 2022-01086-VAC-AC is a vacation of a 10-foot public utility easement and an accessory use application for a 1,680 square foot accessory structure. The property is located at 4380 East Venture Place in the Rural Urban Transition District. Venture subdivision was approved by the Board of County Commissioners in 1972. The 10-foot public utility easement shown on the plat runs north-south through the center of Lot 11. The 10-foot utility easement on similar lots, Lots 7 and 9 of Venture subdivision have already been vacated. At this time, all the public utility holders have responded in writing and have agreed to the vacation of the easement. The applicant has also applied for an accessory use application to build a 1,680 square foot accessory structure. The proposed shop is to be used for personal storage. Here you can see an elevation of the proposed shop and a photo of the existing primary dwelling. There have been no agency objections to the application, and there have been no neighbor comments. The key conditions of approval include that the applicant shall obtain a building permit for the accessory structure. The structure shall meet the dimensional standards of the Rural Urban Transition District. The accessory structure shall be similar in color to the principal permitted dwelling, and the accessory structure shall portray the architectural character of the principal permitted dwelling. Staff is recommending approval of the vacation and the accessory use application, and I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions of our staff?
No, Mr. Chair.
No.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here to, to, go ahead. You're, Raquel?
Yes.
All right.
Corey kind of said it all. It's just a storage unit for our RVs and our toys. That's all we want it for. That's basically it. Any questions?
How tall is it? How high is it?
I believe the structure is 20 feet tall.
Okay, about 20 feet tall, and are there neighbors around that...
Have other structures this tall? Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions of the applicant?
What kind of toys you got?
I have an RV, two UTVs, and a flatbed trailer and enclosed trailer.
Sounds fun.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other cadet discussion or questions?
No, I'm good.
Thank you. All right, I'll close the public hearing on application 202-201-086-VAC-AC. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve project number 2022-01086-VAC-AC, based on testimony here tonight, and the facts, findings of facts and conclusions of law that we've seen.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Corey.
Next up is application 202-200797-A. I'll open the public hearing on application 202-200797-A. Clayton Todd. And we'll have the staff give us a report.
All right, so, the item before you is an appeal of the Director's denial of a zoning certificate for the construction of a new single-family home. The appellant is the property owner, Clayton Todd. The subject property is located on Cunamora Road near the intersection of South Curtis. It is a 20-acre parcel in the RP District. Surrounding properties are all zoned RP as well and contain single-family homes or are vacant rangeland. Should note that the City of Cuna city limits is this pink area to the west, so that is all property within Cuna's city limits.
Can you go back to that? I'm sorry, I was looking on my hard copy.
No worries. So, yeah, all of this is in Ada County, and it's unincorporated, it's all zoned RP, similar to the subject property, and then this is all within Cuna city limits.
And is that their industrial zone?
Chairman, Commissioner, I believe, yes, some of that is zoned industrial for future industrial purposes. Cunamora Road is kind of identified as an area for them to have those types of uses. Depicted here is a rough sketch submitted with the zoning certificate, which shows the approximate location where the property owner wishes to construct a new single-family home. The property is non-conforming, as it is under the 40-acre minimum required in the RP District. So, again, it's only 20 acres in size, so it's half of what's normally required. It was created via an illegal subdivision in 1983. A previous owner and relative of the applicant was informed of this back in 1993 via an application from the city, similar to what we call a property information request today, which basically evaluates properties and tells somebody what they can do with them if they're buildable or not. And at that time, it was deemed non-buildable in '93, and to this day, it still remains non-buildable. So why that's important, for a non-conforming property such as this to be buildable, it must meet one of the two criteria listed here. So either the property is deemed conforming and shall be eligible for permits if it meets the dimensional standards for the base district in which it is now located, so obviously, it doesn't check that box. I've already informed you, 40 acres is required, the subject property is only 20. Or it could be buildable if it meets one of the two other following standards. It was conforming at the time that it was created in the base district, and then due to zone change became non-conforming. As I mentioned in the staff report, the minimum lot size at the time was at least 40 acres, if not 80 acres. I apologize for not remembering that exact detail. So it wasn't an illegal subdivision, it didn't meet the standards of the zoning district at the time when it was created. And then two, if it, if it had a building, had a building on it prior to 1985, and then through calamity or destruction, they would be allowed to pull a new building permit. That section of code has been interpreted a little less severely. We don't necessarily require riots and catastrophe to issue new permits, but if a property had a structure on it pre-85, and they want to build a new home, we can allow them to do that. So this one didn't have a home on it pre-1985. To our knowledge and record, it's never had a home on it, so, again, doesn't qualify for a permit under that option either. I can pause and answer questions on that, it's a little, it can be a little confusing at times, but, so unfortunately, the applicant's property doesn't check either of those boxes, and therefore, it still remains unbuildable as it did back in both '83, when it was originally created, and '93, when we told the previous owners that it was unbuildable. So comments received from agencies, you know, in general, no one has an issue with the property being developed for a single-family home. Our building official will just require a permit if that's something that the board allows to happen here today. Health District is obviously gonna require their process for any septic system. ACHD had no issue with the project. And in terms of the comprehensive plan, a single-family home here doesn't necessarily create an issue with our comprehensive plan, whether or not it's 40 or 20 acres, a single-family home would work in the general area and with the land use designation. So again, we don't have any major agency or public comment concerns, it just doesn't meet our criteria for a non, a property that could be buildable. So in conclusion, we are recommending denial of the appeal, based on the fact that it doesn't check the box for non-conforming properties, and we ask that you affirm the Director's denial of the zoning certificate, which, again, is the process that, by which someone can get a building permit. It should be noted that the property is in a land use designation that could potentially support a rezone to our RR, or Rural Residential District, which has a minimum lot size of 10 acres, and through that process, you know, could receive building permits and eligibility for a single-family home. Some of the advantages of that approach, again, not talking anybody into anything, is, as a non-conforming property, he could receive approval for a building permit for the home, but then if he wants to build a shop or something else, we're kind of back in the same spot where we've got this non-conforming property that it's tough for us to issue the building permit or zoning certificate, because every time that comes up, we have to evaluate the property for compliance. So a rezone might actually be a better option here, just as a possible remedy if this indeed is denied, so. Stand for any questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so Leon, in our code rewrite, are we looking at changing any of the Rural Preservation District zoning at this point?
No, Chairman, Commissioners, no, we're not looking to change minimum lot sizes, we're really not doing anything with dimensional standards. I think we have explored some lot coverage things that staff recently did a few updates on, but we might do that to some, in some other zones as well, but yeah, no change to minimum lot size or anything like that.
Okay, and then, back to the Cuna area, this is in the area of impact, and they are just one lot, right?
Uh, yes, I mean...
Okay, so who owns that lot right there to the left? Do we know?
Chairman, Commissioner, I am not certain who owns it, is a single-family owner, or a single, an individual property owner, just, I don't know.
Okay, so, one of the questions I'll ask the applicant is if they know them or if they're interested, if they could be annexed into Cuna, that would solve the problem. But that little, that little tiny piece there, would that prohibit that? Because that little tiny piece would? Because it has to be contiguous?
Chairman, Commissioner, annexation, it has to be contiguous. That can include corner-to-corner across the street, but we haven't achieved that here yet.
Close.
Very close, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Do you know what the, the structures are to the left and the right?
Yes, Chairman, Commissioner, to the right is, funny enough, another property created around the same time as this property, but they had, they got a building permit and put a home on it pre-85. So now they qualify under item 2B here, where they had a dwelling prior to '85 and had a building permit, so now they're allowed to come back and do another home. And they recently actually constructed that, I think, two to three years ago. So that's to the east, it's just another property identical in nature in terms of size and zoning as the subject property, but again, they, they just got busy pre-85 and were able to do something. To the west is another 20-acre parcel. Haven't checked whether or not that was created via illegal subdivision, but I'm assuming it was. A lot of properties in this area were created via illegal subdivision. To the north, we've got some state-owned land, and then there's the City of Boise Shooting Range for their police department, which is just a little bit farther west. South, we've got, again, single-family, at least one single-family home to the south, and then directly south is just a vacant property, so.
Leon, is this a 20-acre parcel?
Chairman, yes, it is.
So if they were to do this, do this rezone as you threw out there, they'd actually have two buildable lots.
Chairman, that's possible. Staff would want to evaluate that they have, again, proper frontage and things like that. On its face, it looks like, yes, two lots could be possible here, but I wouldn't want to, again, say, yeah, go for two lots. We definitely could do one.
Just the, just the 10-acre minimum, and we do a rezone, a 10-acre minimum, and there's 20 acres there.
Correct, yeah.
On the face of it, it looks like it could be.
It does, yeah. We have frontage and access requirements, and we'd want to obviously check on other things like centralship health, ensuring that the site can support a septic, things like that.
Okay. Any other questions of staff?
So the long, narrow, to the left, the long, narrow thing there, that's the shooting range?
Uh, yeah, this, like upside-down L-shaped?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the houses, the thing that kind of looks like a TV to the right with a...
Uh, right here?
No, or, three more over.
Um, let's see, so, the red one is the subject property, to the east is the property...
One, two, three, four, no, five over, or is that just a...
The prison.
Keep going, to the right.
Over here.
This thing, what's all this?
Uh, Chairman, Commissioner, Richard said the prison, I'm not sure if that's the prison, there's some large settling ponds, anybody, staff, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Chairman, that's a private prison, and that looks like they're, they're ponds for the, for the facility.
Okay. All right, any other questions of staff?
No.
Okay. Clayton, if you're here, if you'd like to take a few minutes for your rationale, go ahead.
I have that one. So...
Have you come up to the mic and give your name and...
Todd.
Give your name and...
I'm Clayton Todd, and I'm the representative for the Todd Revocable Trust. The 20 acres in, actually, the red one, which is in question right now, plus the 20 acres to the left, the 20 acres to the right, and the next 28, or the two 10-acre parcels used to be my parents', my dad's. Anyhow, as he passed away here in October, I'm just trying to find a way to resolve the last issues with the property, the one to the, the first 10-acre parcel to the east, we just recently sold because it was allowed the building permit. And so, the acreage that we're talking about was also attached to the one to the left-hand side there, to the west, and that's when my parents separated, they split it, and I don't think they realized at the time that that would take away the building permit building permit issue and stuff. And so that's the reason I'm just trying to go through whatever steps I need to be able to do to get a permit to be able to sell it that way, because everybody that's inquired about it wants to be able to build on it.
Mr. Chair, just a couple of questions for clarification. So you're trying to build on this lot, or you're trying to sell it?
I'm just trying to sell it, but I need to get a build permit, whether or not I build on it or I sell it.
Someone else.
Yeah, somebody else.
Too small, okay, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And then the property on this map to the left, right directly to the left?
Yeah.
And you own that, or you sold that?
No, we don't own that anymore.
Okay, do you know who owns it?
No, I don't.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're saying these two narrow strips there, they're 10-acre parcels?
And the one, the first one there, what the hell is right now? That one I just sold with a build permit on that 10-acre parcel here about a month and a half ago.
The one right next to it?
The other 10?
Yeah, right there.
I don't know when it was sold, because I was sold when I was...
It has a building permit too?
For me.
It has a building permit as well?
I'm not sure on it. But the one in between the two, the 10, and the one that we, that I, the last one that we own, that's the one he was just talking about, that in 1985, it had a building put on it, and then that's been re, they can rebuild on it because it was done prior to 1985.
Which one's that?
Chairman, this is the directly east...
Well, that's that one right there.
The 20-acre parcel here. This is the home site up front near Cudamora Road.
Yeah, because they're building it.
But it's never been built.
This one has a home, it had a home pre-85, and it just recently rebuilt on the property.
They're rebuilding it as we speak. Or finishing as we speak.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
So that all used to be one whole lot with one house, and then a...
80 acres used to be one, actually, when my parents bought it from the county back at an auction back in the 70s, we used to farm the alfalfa off of it.
And so when they divided it, they didn't realize that they would, they might lose their right to build?
I don't know that when my parents separated and they went through the divorce and they did a quick claim deed and split that 40 acres that we're talking about currently. I don't know that at the time that they were aware that they weren't going to build or sell it as a buildable piece.
What else is on that land? Is it all just the one house and farmer's fields, or is it nothing?
On what I'm talking about?
On all of it, on all the land?
Well, when we bought, when my parents bought it, there was nothing on there.
So today, there's just the one house?
There's just the one house on that middle, or the third one, the third 20-acre parcel there.
And all the rest is?
All is open land right now.
No farming going on?
No farming.
Okay. So a question to staff, I mean, that's kind of an interesting dilemma, where if they hadn't divided it, then they would have, what, maintained the right to build additional structures?
Yeah, Chairman Commissioners, there's two 40, it was 80 acres here total. Under our current code, it would allow at least two buildable lots, and then under past versions of the code, there used to be an opportunity to create what was called a farm development right parcel, which was a much smaller parcel. And then some of the larger parcels could be deemed buildable. So funny enough, you could have got probably four, based on a 1993 letter, there could have been possibly four buildings total, four parcels buildable here. But it would have required them to recombine everything and go through those processes with Ada County, and they never did that. They, it looks, and it's clear they sold off pieces here and there. So that ability to reassemble the parcels seems really difficult at this point, so.
You've had offers to buy, but they fall through because they can't build?
Yeah, I've had several offers, but the minute they find out they can't build on it, they're, you know, the price goes way down. And so it's just a matter of going through whatever steps we need to do to find out how to rezone it so that we can get a build permit on it, so that there's, because there is interest in it. I've probably got a half, more than a half dozen people that are wanting it and stuff, but they...
Offer residential houses? They all want to build a house?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other testimony that could be presented on this, on this application? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing on application number 2022000797A, and ask for a motion.
Well, Mr. Chair, I'm just sort of looking at the options here. I mean, we could overturn the director's decision and issue a conditional use permit for a building permit.
Chairman, it would be a zoning certificate, which is the planning side of a building permit necessary to construct a single-family home.
But we could also look at changing the zoning designation.
Correct. That would require a new application by the applicant and the public hearing process. But yes, that is, that appears to be a way forward here as well.
Or just maintain the status quo.
Yes, those are the three alternatives.
Well, our alternative is either to accept or reject the application. That is our alternative tonight. Now, we can give some recommendations moving forward, but it seems to me, in my view, that we have the zoning ordinance as it sits right now, and it seems to me like it would be proper and it would be easier, maybe a longer process, to request a rezone.
Okay.
In that, the way Leon suggested, it would take a little longer, but you're not in any hurry to build a home there, and you've got eight or 10 people who want to buy it. They might wait around, it might increase the value.
Mr. Chair, we're just supposed to be delivering...
I get that.
Yeah. So if we do that, though, then we're going to end up with probably two homes versus one, where if we go ahead and accept the zoning certificate on this, we could limit it, put conditions of approval on it, and limit it to one family, a single-family resident. And the only reason I'm thinking of going that direction is just the location of it. It's in an illegal subdivision, but it's right next to where CUNA is going to be putting and has actually put their industrial zone. There's a buildable lot right next door to it. It's in between a shooting range and the prison, so I don't know if it would really be bothersome to any, cause any hardship for any of the neighbors out there. I'm just afraid if we go through the rezoning, we might end up with more homes out there than we would just approving it here today. So that's kind of my dilemma, so.
Well, again, it's not our choice. If we accept it, he could still go through a rezone if he wanted to. So anyway, what's, is there a motion?
I'm going to go ahead and move that we approve, or we overturn the director's denial of the zoning certificate and approve the zoning certificate with the condition of approval that there'll be only one single-family home built on this lot. And based on the testimony here today and what I've seen where this lot actually is, it's just, I mean, it's just right there from being annexed into CUNA as well. So this is going to happen, and I just assume, go ahead and let the gentleman try to sell it where he can.
Do you have a second to the motion?
I'll second that, because it doesn't preclude an application for rezone either. But based on the testimony I've heard, I think, you know, this is the right thing to do. So I'll second that.
Mr. Chairman, and...
We'll have to table it to get some revised findings of fact and conclusions of law, and...
What's the table date?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we do have a second public hearing on July 27th that we could table this to, help give Leon enough time to prepare those revised findings.
Well, we don't need to actually do it in the public hearing, can we?
That's correct. We could also table it to the 26th, if that would be better, to the open business meeting.
Yeah.
Did you say 25th?
26th.
26, okay. So I amend the motion to go ahead and table this to July 26, 2022, so we can get a revised findings of facts and conclusions of law from staff based on what we recommended here today.
Do we, do we have a second to the revision?
I'll second the revision.
Before we finalize that, I'm looking at Annie, who looks a little concerned on that date.
No, I'm not concerned on the date. I was doing the motion to approve it and overturn the director's denial, and then table revised findings until July 26th. Is that correct? So we have an approval and to fully table any revised findings.
Yes, correct.
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to support the motion. I think that's a good, good way forward for you. And if you want to add another lot, you can try and get it rezoned. But in the meantime, you can go ahead and sell it.
Kind of hope.
Yeah. All in favor of the question, the motion? You've heard the motion. Say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. We have, I'm going to open the public hearing on application 202102852ZCDAMSP, Architecture Chrysalis, Chrysalis Architecture. All right, we'll get a report from our, from our staff. Go ahead.
Dear Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, project number 202102852ZCDAMSP is a zoning ordinance map amendment to rezone approximately 0.661 acres from the medium high-density residential district to the very high-density residential district, along with the development agreement. In addition, a master site plan application for multifamily development consisting of 12 apartments is included. The property is located at 6162 South Maple Grove Road in Section 36, Ten Shive Street North, Range 1 East. Following the first public hearing in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the applicant made significant changes to their proposal and brought forth a new proposal, which was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their May 12, 2022, public hearing to address neighbor concerns. The most significant change is only utilizing Lot 15 Block 3 of Fiddler's Glen Subdivision, which is the southern property. Which is the southern property. Other changes include reducing the number of units from 22 to 12, and access to the development will be off of South Maple Grove Road. The future land use map and the Boise Comprehensive Plan, as adopted by Ada County, designates the property as compact, which has a target density of 60 to 15 dwelling units per acre, and lists apartments as a primary use. The property is also located within a neighborhood activities center, which has a target density of 8 to 16 units per acre, and allows projects designed in accordance with the city's design standards to have even higher densities. The proposal for a compact multifamily development is compatible with the adopted comprehensive plan. The rezone to the R-20 district also implies with a purpose statement of the R-20 district. The general purpose statement for residential districts is to implement the applicable comprehensive plan within areas of city impact, providing appropriate density for residential development based on the availability of public facilities, surrounding land uses, and the applicable comprehensive plan designation. The purpose statement for the R-20 district is to accommodate multiple family dwellings, including not limited to townhomes and/or apartments. This project has been designed in accordance with the design standards and the comprehensive plan by placing the building on the corner of the adjacent roadways, providing pedestrian connections to surrounding properties and pathways. The intersection of South Maple Grove Road and West Lake Hazel Road is designated as a neighborhood activities center. Neighborhood activities centers are intended to serve one or more neighborhoods and are characterized by small-scale service uses that may include mixed-use or attached housing. The proposed multifamily development is appropriate at this location as there is an existing apartment complex at the southwest corner of Maple Grove and Lake Hazel Roads. And the other two corners of the intersection are zoned commercial and will consist of commercial uses in the future. Since the structure has a footprint that's greater than 10,000 square feet, it must be designed such that the building mass and bulk are distributed. The structure has been designed that building mass and bulk are distributed as there is varied setbacks within the structure, providing for a varied outward appearance. There are variations of the horizontal offsets of the structure facade, and a change in grade from the front of the building to the rear of the building. Staff finds that the multifamily development isn't compliant with Ada County Code, as it complies with the specific use standards for multifamily development, along with the standards for a master site plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended denial of this project to the board due to access to the site. The Ada County Highway District will only grant a write-in and write-out access for the project, as there is roundabout proposed to be constructed at the intersection. At their public hearing, the commission raised the concern that for residents of the proposed development to get to the nearest community activities center at Lake Hazel and Maple and Five Mile Roads, that they would illegally turn left onto South Maple Grove Road, or they would turn right and make a U-turn at one of the nearest streets coming off of South Maple Grove Road, which would create a safety hazard and adversely impact nearby residents. Staff is recommending approval of this project to the board because the multifamily development is an appropriate use for the site. This small multifamily development will help to increase the supply of diverse and affordable housing options in Treasure Valley. In addition, staff believes that the site design can provide safe ingress and egress onto South Maple Grove Road. The development is estimated to generate 81 additional vehicle trips per day and seven additional vehicle trips per hour in the P and peak hour, based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual 11th Edition. The amount of trips generated from the development is not significant, and residents can utilize the public streets network in the area to access nearby shopping by following traffic laws in regards to the write-in and write-out traffic movement from the site. Numerous members of the public have provided comments on this application. Main concerns include parking, specifically, you know, multifamily residents parking on adjacent residential streets, ACHD's requirement for an only write-in, write-out access for the development, and compatibility to surrounding homes. A number of agencies have provided comments on the application. The Boise Fire Department, on behalf of the Whitney Fire District, say that the area is already served by them, and that the service level demand for this slightly increased density will be minor, and that they can approve this application. The specific building construction requirements of their National Building Code and their National Fire Code will apply. The Ada County Highway District reply that this development is estimated to generate 81 additional vehicle trips per day and seven additional vehicle trips per hour in the P and peak hour, and that traffic counts on Lake Hazel Road and Maple Grove Road are within acceptable P and peak hour level of service E. Key conditions of approval include the following: access into the site shall be approved by the Ada County Highway District. The applicant and/or owner shall submit landscaping and screening plan that complies with Article 8-4 of the Ada County Code. As I mentioned before, the Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending denial of this application to the board. Staff finds that this application complies with Ada County Code, and the adopted comprehensive plan is recommending approval of this application to you, and I'll stand for any questions.
I have a question. The Highway District did not see any safety problems with the application.
Mr. Chairman, that is correct.
Are there any other questions to the...
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
So when this project was brought to staff, they were proposing 22 units?
That is correct.
Is that 22 townhomes within, like, how many, how many buildings, how many units per building?
Originally, and I'll kind of go to the aerial photo of Commissioner Davidson. So originally, they were planning, as you can kind of set the car, there's two lots here. So we have the southern lot, and we had a northern lot. So originally, with their initial proposal, they were planning on having kind of parking on this northern lot, and then they were having 22 apartments within one building on the southern property. The main issue with the development beyond the northern lot is ACHD, through their policy, they have a policy that you have to take access off of the road that has the lesser functional classification. So Lake, so Lake Hazel and Maple Grove Roads are both arterial roadways, and Obo Avenue here is a local road. So based on their policy, they, if the applicant was to develop on both lots here, they required the access to come off of Obo Avenue. Obviously, at the first public hearing that we had in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission, that was a very contentious with the neighbors, obviously didn't want to have that access off of Obo Avenue. So the applicant scaled back their proposal and is just proposing to have the development on the southern property, and therefore to meet the open space requirements that we have for multifamily developments, as well as to have adequate parking. They basically made their proposal just on that southern lot.
So where would people enter?
So people are going to enter off of Maple Grove. So if we go back to the site plan, so we have, you know, this is Lake Hazel Road, and this is Maple Grove. The applicant, well, the residents will enter off of Maple Grove Road. This is the entrance to the, to the complex, and then they would exit out here as well. So they would have to come, once the roundabouts built, they would come up, turn right, and then obviously, to exit, they would have to turn right onto Maple Grove Road.
That's a medium, or that's going to be a roundabout?
Yes.
It's...
It's a point. We don't know that.
According to the, the A C H D staff report and their integrated five-year work plan, um, the roundabout is expected to be constructed in twenty twenty-three is what A C H D is planning on constructing that roundabout. Uh, the design phase of it is, I think, ninety-five percent complete.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
So do you know if A C H D's policy is based on safety concerns? They prefer people slowing down on the less busy street to enter rather than slowing down on an arterial tanker?
So I think the, the rationale that A C H D has for their, for their access is basically the, it's more related to the function of the roadway itself. So if you have an arterial roadway, arterial roadway is going to have more traffic and the function of an arterial roadway is to move basically traffic through a region. Whereas a local street is, is obviously uh, designed for fewer cars, you know, utilizing a local street and the local street is intended to have more access points. That's where your individual driveways are off of the local street. Whereas with an arterial roadway to preserve the function, functionality of the roadway to move traffic, you want less driveways than you would on a local street. And so that, therefore, A C H D's policy is when you have a, a property that fronts more than one street, that the access comes off of that, um, roadway that has the less, the lesser, uh, functional classification.
Because you don't want to slow down traffic.
Exactly.
Be the rationale. Um, so they, they scaled it back to twelve and then still got turned down by P and Z.
That is correct.
Was the, was the size of the, the overall size of the building still the same, but just the units were bigger? Or did they, uh, decrease the overall square footage of the project?
They also decreased overall square footage.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
So right, turn right in and write out. So let's go, if we're looking at, they're coming out and they're gonna go right on Maple Grove. That's, since they're on the corner, that's a, a mile that they have to go to the next corner, which, what's that intersection?
So that'd be, um, so the next, there's a, for the half mile, it's Desert Avenue and then mile away would be Amity Road.
Yeah, so the first thoroughfare or the first?
Yeah, so Amity Road would be the, the next arterial and that'd be a mile away. And then there's a, there was a, I think, Desert Avenue, which is a collector's street, is about half a mile up the road.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
From the applicant?
Anything else? Any other questions of our staff?
Not at this time. It's here from the applicant.
Okay, uh, thank you. Would the applicant like to, uh, present some testimony? You have fifty minutes. Go ahead.
Good evening. Uh, Richard Wilmot, Chrysalis Architecture, three nine one four, East Presidential, Meridian, Idaho. Um, Commissioners, uh, thank you for the time tonight. We, we are asking for approval of our, of the rezone to R twenty, as Brent mentioned. Um, and I, I brought, I prepared a small presentation just to kind of take us through the process that we've gone through with this application.
Okay.
I'll try to be brief. Uh, Brent did a great job in terms of, uh, uh, capturing the, the high points of, of where we've come from and how we've got to the point that we are here now. Um, as, as Brent mentioned, the, the, the intersection of Lake Hazel and Maple Grove is a neighborhood activities center uh, in the Boise, City of Boise Comprehensive Plan. What that means is that there's a variety of uses, there's a variety of intensities, a variety of densities uh, that are expected to be occurring at that intersection or very near that intersection within a quarter-mile radius. Uh, and so this particular use, uh, our, our, our particular project, it, it very much complies with um, what could be expected when, uh, this property is annexed into the city of Boise. Uh, my discussions with the city of Boise are such that they aren't sure when that's to occur, whether it's gonna be three years, five years, ten years. We don't, we don't really know that yet. Uh, but it's going to happen. Uh, the boundaries of the city of Boise are very close to this particular intersection. Um, and so when that happens, uh, there would be, there would be effectively uh, a, a new zone placed upon this particular property. Uh, and I don't have, I don't have anything in writing, uh, my discussions with the city of Boise are such that um, they're just so, they're, they're so backed up that they couldn't give us a report that either supported uh, uh, my discussions, but, um, it would be expected that this could be an R three zone or an R one M zone, something that is much higher than a twenty units per acre, uh, density. And so our proposals uh, from the beginning have always been less than twenty units per acre. Uh, our current proposal at the twelve units on just the southern lot is eighteen point two units per acre. So we're, we're very much in that zone, uh, of, of what would be expected here. Um, with that, I'm providing sort of an example of what the comprehensive plan for this particular corner looks like, uh, in the city of Boise. Uh, and it shows, it shows that, uh, as Brent mentioned, that this area is designated to be compact, this particular lot uh, is, is intended to be compact. So it, again, it would be expected that it would have a much higher density than what we're currently proposing. Um, with that said, go to the next slide, please Brent. Zoom out just a little bit. Um, so this was our first proposal. Uh, and, and one of the significant, uh, items or issues with this particular property is that, um, because it's in the county, it, it has a, it has a moratorium on sewer connections. Uh, this particular property, the southern lot only, not the northern lot, but the southern lot, uh, prior to the moratorium was provided with a four-inch sewer connection. So by nature, we've, we've gained approval from City of Boise Public Works that we would be able to connect to that sewer connection that's already being, that's already provided to the, to the southern lot. Well, given that it's a four-inch connection, um, and that it's in Ada County, uh, we would only be allowed up to, um, uh, like twenty-three units or twenty-four units in total on two lots. So our initial development, our initial proposal included the northern lot and the southern lot. And we would be able to do that because of that four-inch connection. Anything more than that, the four-inch connection would be overloaded and it wouldn't have the capacity to handle the proposed improvements. So we proposed this, we, we recognized that the neighborhood would have concerns about accessing or vehicular access to Obo. Um, and we, uh, in our design, we're suggesting that we take and, uh, a drive vehicular access only onto Maple Grove. Inevitably, A C H D did not approve that. We, we got a staff report at the very last moment, uh, literally within hours of our, of our initial meeting and basically denying, denying the access and then in turn forcing us to take access off of Obo. And so we went back to the drawing board and said, okay, well, if we, we don't, we don't want to, uh, we don't want to put the vehicular, uh, traffic and access onto the, onto, onto Obo. We want to try to keep it onto Lake Hazel and Maple Grove. And the way that we can do that is to only develop on the southern lot. Again, the one with the sewer connection. Uh, it is, it'll, it does reduce the overall scope of the project, uh, but again, it keeps the density right at about eighteen point two units per acre. Um, and with that, you know, there were obviously concerns of the neighborhood in terms of, um, pedestrian access, vehicular access, uh, and just gen- general impact of the particular area. However, the development is not out of character for what the comprehensive plan is to be expected for this lot. Go to the next slide, please. Our second proposal, um, involved, again, reducing it to the southern lot, um, keeping it to just to twelve units. Um, we, we were required to maintain a, a, a space for cross-access in the future. Um, and that's significant for the reason of, um, that any development, whether it's this development as a multifamily project or a commercial development or a retail development or any development, would be given the same criteria that we were in terms of taking access from the lower classified street, which would be Obo. Because we don't have that connection anymore on the south lot, A C H D wanted us to provide cross-access between what is the south lot and the north lot and we, we didn't have any objection to that. Uh, our initial thought here on the second proposal was that Lake Hazel-
Can I ask you, ask you a quick question on that point?
Okay.
So there's a special recommendation Ada County from A C H D to require the cross-section easement between the site and the parcel. So those are your two, your two parcels.
We actually only own the south, the southern parcel, but yes, go ahead.
And then, and then to allow the site to take access from Obo Avenue. So which site to take access from Obo?
Then the northern lot would be required to do that.
If the northern lot develops.
If the northern lot ever were to develop, that's correct.
Just wanted to get that clear. Thank you.
And again, it's not particular to this type of use. It's any development on this, on these two parcels would be required to take access from Obo. So it could be a, a five thousand square foot retail center, it could be a restaurant, it could be anything. It would always have to come through Obo. So this, this lot is a little bit restricted given its particular area and the fact that A C H D is recommending that we do take access from Maple Grove. We find that as an opportunity here to take advantage of. Um, with that, you know, there were certain concerns of the neighbors at that time. Uh, we then went back to the drawing board. Uh, one of the things that we, uh, go to the next slide there Brent. One of the things that we, uh, we went through is just to say, show what the overall context of the intersection looks like. I prepared a site plan that shows what the roundabout looks like, what the adjacent sidewalks, uh, what the adjacent crossings through the, through the roundabout as there were safety concerns that were brought up. Um, the, the, the reality is that, uh, with the crossings-
Okay, if you could wrap it up?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, this shows overall context, uh, with our site and the roundabout and the existing buildings of the apartment complex across the street. And the next slide Brent. And then our final proposal here, again, twelve units, uh, parking and the integration of the roundabout. And I stand for any questions.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Do you have any idea what the proposed, uh, rents are gonna be for the twelve units?
Uh, I don't, uh, but I could certainly, I could certainly provide that information to Brent and um, and then have it included as part of our, as part of the record.
If you'd gone with the twenty-two units, would they have been smaller apartments?
No, and, oh, that was one thing I did want to clarify. It, they're the same-sized units that were initially proposed. Just, just reduced number of units. So the overall building square footage came down. Uh, but the, but the design of the units, they were all two-bedroom units. Um, and, and that's the same, same design, uh, as what we had initially provided.
I mean, just high-end, low-end, middle-class, what, what's the target market here?
Very much, very much middle-class. Uh, we're not intending to provide, uh, l- low-income, uh, situation and we're not also intending to provide very high-income situations. It's very much characteristic of what is, what is the neighborhood now.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions of the applicant?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just, so, uh, this presentation will be exhibit number eighty-two.
Okay.
And Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Leon, we didn't add the, um, exhibit that Hank gave us.
Yeah, funny enough, uh, Commissioners, I was just talking to, I know that item is closed and I'm sure procedurally we're at a step here, but all of those, all those presentations will be included as exhibits, just-
We just don't have a number for him tonight.
Yes, correct. And, um, there will be a memo for that item, so I'll list those exhibits during, in that memo, so.
All right, good enough. All right, uh, and you'll add this exhibit here. Are there any, is there anyone else in the audience who wants to testify on this project? Okay. Come on up, one at a time. You got three minutes. State your name for the record. You have three minutes to go. Go ahead, state your name.
I'm Susan Lynch and I live at eight eight oh eight West Dulcimer, which is, um, down the street from the circle. Um, I've been to all three meetings that has been discussing this property and I'm one of those neighbors that he keeps speaking of. I speak for Ruth that lives right next to the property. I speak for the two older ladies that live across the street that couldn't come to the meeting because one has COVID and one is trying to take care of her son that is ill. I speak for all the people on the street and I especially speak for our children. Our neighborhood, as you don't, as I hope you will, all come and see my neighborhood and come see this piece of land. It is little. It is not this big and I'm not sure exactly how the picture makes it look bigger than it is. But, um, I speak for our neighborhood that has about twenty families with little, fifteen families with little children that run around because we don't have backyards. And that neighborhood, whatever they're talking about, our kids can't play next to Lake Hazel. There's a lease, six hundred and sixty-three cars and cars that go across it just at the peak hour of the day. Um, they can't play on that little grass area. That is not safe for our kids. They run around the neighborhood, in the road and outside of all of our yards. It is a great neighborhood. I, I pretty much know every single house and I speak for them. I know that our neighborhood does not want this traffic coming in our neighborhood and we don't want the parking. In previous meetings, the Commissioners, Planning and Zoning Commissioners stated that, um, stated that it wouldn't make sense to put this property down, put this twenty-one units on this lower end. He had forty-four on two pieces of property and now that he lost his second buyer, the second owner, he's now trying to cram in half, tw- just as many apartments in the second half. What will look like the first half? The first half will look like what it looks like now, which is dirt and weeds that get mowed down about every six months. People in the apartments will find a place to park there. They will park in our streets. On average, every night, we walk, um, around our circle and we, there's a lease during the day, twenty-two cars in the last week, every single day, during the day on our circle. During the night, that number rises up to thirty-five to forty cars that are, and that is just the people that live in our circle that are off Obo. The, this, if you put the apartments, they will find a way to park in that dirt area. They will find a way to walk around that common area that they say is a play area, which I don't see how it is. It's A C H D drainage ditch. And, um, they, and my kids, we don't let them go down and play in the drainage ditch. Um, they will also see that, I don't know. I have eight seconds. I just want you to invite you to come check this out personally. Come meet our neighborhood. We don't want our neighborhood to change because we want to cram twenty-one. We're not against building, but we are against building so much. I have so much more to say, but I know I can't say it. So please come by and talk to us. You're welcome in our circle.
Let me ask you a question. What is the, the green area to the right of the site that borders Lake Hazel that are, that's behind the houses? Is that bare land or is that grass or what is it?
It is grass, but those people's backyards are right there. So when your kids are playing there, it honestly feels like you're in their backyard. So my kids don't really play there, even though we live right up on that street because it, you can't see them for one. Lake Hazel is right there and it is full of traffic, especially that's hence why they want to put a roundabout there. So there's so much traffic on Lake Hazel that it's really not safe for our kids to, they can play there, but we can't see them. We don't really know what they're doing. We don't know really where-
Are people gonna be trying to be building where that grass is on Lake Hazel or is it?
Um, I would assume not. That little cement thing that's right next to the site, I imagine, is owned by the water district or A C H D. I don't know. And then if you keep going over, that's where the drainage ditch begins. And I honestly don't know who owns land, if it's HOA. I, I don't know. Our HOA is not very commu- they don't communicate very well with the residents of our area, so we, they don't represent us, but-
Is the intent of that for people to use? Is it sort of supposed to be a common area?
I, you know, I'm not gonna say that's the intent of that square because you don't see people using it. When they do, um, it's a few people. I don't see people using it.
Okay.
But I guess that is the intent. It's pretty grass. There's like a black path that heads up the hill, but it actually stops by that cement, that building that's got, um, city things inside it. I'm not sure what they are.
Who maintains the grass in that area?
I'm sorry, what?
Who maintains it? Like mows it and waters it and stuff?
I assume the HOA, but when we asked the HOA at our last meeting, all of these questions, they had no real answers for us. They could not tell us the lines between A C H D and HOA. To tell you the truth, I am not sure, but I assume that's who turns the sprinklers on, but I honestly don't know.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to- Mr. Chair, I just wanted to clarify that this application is for 12 apartments, not 22.
That is correct. Commissioner Kenyon.
Yes, it's gone down every meeting. It changes. So I'm sorry for my confusion.
Thank you.
Yes, okay, thank you, thank you. All right. Go ahead, come on up, state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Andrew Ross, and I live at 662 South Tambourine Avenue, just a little bit away from, uh, the location of this apartment complex. I'm going to read first a letter that my wife wrote. She's unable to be here at this time, and then I'm going to hopefully get a little bit of a laugh through some Legos. Okay, here we go. "To whom it may concern, uh, I'm a resident in the loop directly impacted by the rezoning proposal for apartments in Lake Hazel and Maple Grove. As I have stated in previous two Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, uh, I am vehemently opposed to the rezoning of four children, um, ages 19 months to 12 years. I believe the consideration for rezoning will make our neighborhood much more dangerous, not only for my children, but for the dozens of others that live and play in our neighborhood. Most of us do not have a yard, uh, space, and our children popcorn play between all the front yards and driveways. The increased traffic and limited parking will put our children at increased risk. Also, as said before, there are several school bus stops that would be impacted by this apartment complex. Uh, that was mentioned in the different Planning and Zoning meetings, um, as they both stop on Lake Hazel and Maple Grove. Uh, and I feel that the applicant has not done their due diligence with ACHD concerning the traffic circle impact on the traffic for such a small lot and how close it is to the traffic circle. Please deny this request for, uh, good, so that the applicant can pursue a more suitable build for our neighborhood, such as a townhouse that matches with the surrounding buildings, as that has been the ongoing concern as far as compatibility." Oh, I have a little bit of time. Awesome. So, uh, does this thing work? I'm not going to do the technology, I promise I will. That's too much. I know, I don't want to fight with technology there. It's okay. I'll just show you all here. So, um, this is actually our wonderful neighborhood. So this is the lot and square. You don't see all of it there. Um, so this is me. It's not to scale, as you can imagine. Um, I wish I was that tall. Um, this is my wonderful neighbor, Susan. Hi, Susan. She's right here. Um, and, uh, so this is our little square that she keeps talking about, and this is the access over here from, from Obo. Here's, um, Dulcimer. This is my road, Tambourine. Um, and this is the apartment complex. And again, yes, it's not to scale, but it actually is showing the number of units of 12 that they are anticipating have in relation to the other, um, uh, houses in there. The reason that these are twer, uh, two, uh, two-by-fours is because these are townhouses, uh, these are duplexes, or these are single-family homes. It's not compatible. It doesn't fit to the neighborhood, um, and you really should deny this. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, I don't want you, at least bring it up here.
Are you going to pay with my Legos? I have to take it up my son.
We might have to put it in as an exhibit.
That was our concern.
What's our exhibit number for that?
This will be exhibit number 83. And then after, after the hearing, I think I could take a picture of it, so.
I appreciate that.
It needs for your kids, man.
I got to say, this is the first time we've had Lego as an exhibit, so I wanted to get a nice, close look, but, well, thank you for.
Attempting to be me, so, yes.
All right.
Thank you.
After the hearing, I'll take a picture.
Okay, wonderful.
We just have one question. Can you point to us on the map where the bus stop is?
Um, so there is, that's the way for me to come over here, is this easier? So there are a couple of bus stops, uh, that are right, actually right here, uh, along Lake Hazel, a little bit further down. Uh, so again, the traffic circle's coming here, and there's also, when you come up Maple Grove, you have access into this neighborhood where we're at, which is Banjo. Is that correct?
Yes.
Banjo. So the Banjo is the cross-street that comes this way, um, and that's where you get closer to Winners Run, which is on this side. And so there's a couple of different bus stops, very close, I mean, like within a couple hundred feet of this, where the traffic circle's going to be. So yes, so there's Banjo that you see there. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, sir. If you could, uh, state your name, uh, for the record.
My name's Logan Osler. I live at 8890 West Dulcimer Street in Boise. Uh, I speak for me and for my partner, Crystal Huerta, who couldn't come tonight, but we both live there. We're about three houses away from the lot in question, and I, I know in previous meetings they said that we meet, or the project meets, uh, the amount of parking spots that is required, but I've never been to a parking, or a apartment complex that had adequate parking, and I don't think anyone else here has either. So, I mean, that's obviously, has to overflow to us, because we're the only street nearby. And there's, like they said, there's children, dogs, people walking around in the streets. There's already parking problems. Last time I parked, I had to go three houses down from where I live, so it, I think that's going to be a problem. Another issue is the compatibility. It's a big, modern building, and we're kind of country houses, and so I think a big building that clashes with the aesthetic and congests our streets is going to lower our property value. Also, I didn't realize that the north lot was, uh, had to come in through Obo, which was the problem in the first meeting, and it sounds like they're probably going to expand to that, and then it's going to come through, and then we just have the same problem we did in the first meeting, so. I would urge you guys to maybe have them go back and talk to ACHD about it or whatnot and, and deny the request, because I, I think, to quote, uh, Commissioner from the last meeting, this is just kind of a square pegging around hole. I realize it's an empty lot that's going to be developed, but I think an apartment complex just doesn't really work on this particular lot, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair. Oh, go ahead. So, I mean, what, what did you expect was going to be built there?
I don't, like a townhouse or a home or something, not a 12-unit apartment complex that is going to have, you know, it, it's two-bedroom, but when I was younger, we bought, got a two-bedroom and slammed four roommates in there with four cars, you know, to decrease costs, plus your, I mean, one Super Bowl party is going to overflow that, so like a townhouse, a home, I don't know, they said like a restaurant or something, but.
Well, a restaurant's going to have a lot of traffic.
Yeah, no, that's true. You're right. So, but yeah.
Did your homeowners' association vote on whether they supported this or not?
It's really confusing, because, yeah, we haven't really heard from them. The first meeting, they said they were, and then the second meeting, they said they didn't approve of it, but I don't know, I haven't heard anything from them.
Well, sometimes HOAs are a little dysfunctional, so that's okay. All right, well, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, there's no other, uh, people want to testify? Are there any questions of the, uh, staff?
No.
Before we proceed? Okay, we'll close the, uh.
Mr. Chair, are we going to have the applicant close it out, or?
Yeah, we could. Yeah, excuse me, I'm sorry. If the applicant would like to rebut anything, you got, you got, uh, three minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, just to clarify a few items that were raised, uh, uh, by the neighbors now. Uh, the project was never 44 units. Uh, our initial proposal was, was 22. The, the other consideration relative to the sewer moratorium is that the connection only allows connection to one building on, on one parcel, which is why it's, it's more of an apartment-type situation as opposed to a townhome, uh, uh, type product that would be on multiple lots. So we're only allowed the one connection. A townhome, uh, a townhome development would require multiple connections. And, and the way that the moratorium is written now is that that would not be allowed. So, however, once, once it's annexed into the city of Boise, that completely changes. So it's, it's because of the, it's because of the moratorium that we're only limited to that. Uh, as far as the, uh, the common area that is to the, uh, to the, um, to the east, that's, that's all common area that's, that's, uh, run and maintained and owned by the subdivision. Uh, it's part of the plat for the subdivision, which these two lots are a part of. So these lots are actually a part of the subdivision. And so anybody in the subdivision is allowed to use them. That's why the pathway is there. It's meant to promote connectivity, pedestrian access, and we are effectively doing the same with this particular development by showing added and enhanced pedestrian connectivity so that, you know, the neighbors can actually get to know one another, meet each other, talk to one another. One of the concerns that was raised, uh, at the last hearing was, uh, a question about the bus stops, and we sort, we took that into consideration with this particular, uh, layout and not having the access off of Lake Hazel. Um, we, we actually showed, uh, in the bottom right corner, if you can highlight the little bus stop area, we're anticipating that there's going to be potentially children in this, in, within the building, and to us, it makes sense to have a place for them to, to wait, and it's part of the connect pathways that are provided with, with this development. And in terms of, you know, parking on the streets, I don't envision, uh, uh, the, the residents of this particular building, uh, parking on, on the street on Obo, that is a public street. Anyone can park there at any time. But if they wanted to, they would have a long trek across, uh, the northern lot that isn't intended to be developed, at least not by us. So, uh, it would be rather complicated for them at this point. However, we've offered in the past to make that connection and maintain that connection to the north via pedestrian pathway. So that option is still available if, if the commission so chooses.
All right.
I stand for any additional questions.
Any questions of the applicant? Mr. Chair, so you, um, you still own the northern lot?
Uh, we do not.
Who owns that?
Uh, the owner of the two lots. We only are in contract for the southern lot.
And so, um, is there, is there going to be any kind of boundary around the parking lot that'll discourage, you know, people from driving out of the parking lot and into the undeveloped lot?
Yes, Commissioner Davidson, uh, basically, we're required a landscape buffer around all perimeters of our property. We're intending to provide that. There'll be trees that are, that'll be placed there. There's curbing. There's drain, drainage considerations. This particular lot is, is sloped such that, um, if you can actually go to, I think, one of the elevation, uh, views, Brent, I wanted to show in context, yeah, uh, go up one. That's actually, yeah. So this, this bottom photo here, it kind of shows the elevation of the grade difference. So that longer image that shows, uh, the existing residents and the height of it relative to the height of our building, um, you, the green area is basically the height of the, of the grade as it traverses from the south up to the north. So, um, we, uh, we effectively, um, are, I, I don't, I don't envision that being something that, uh, they would want to do unless there's a pathway there, effectively, in terms of providing access, pedestrian access.
You don't envision that people will park in the, the dirt lot?
They would have to drive over a curb, uh, to make that happen. And there, and there, there very well could be some sort of garden wall or retaining wall along that northern property line, just to be able to break the grade and make our, make our grades work, but we would work that out through the design process.
So basically, everybody coming in and out is going to be entering off of Maple Grove?
That is correct.
Okay. How many parking spots do you have?
Right now, we have 27 parking spaces.
For 12 units?
For 12 units.
Okay. Staff, what's our requirement? Do we have a requirement for that?
We do. Uh, Commissioner Davidson, for a two-bedroom apartment, you're required to have, uh, two parking spaces for each unit. And then for multi-family development, you're required to have, uh, for each apartment, you're required to have .25 parking spaces for visitor parking. And so with the 12 units, you're required to have three visitor parking spaces, which with this development would be 27 parking spaces that would be required.
You're at the bare minimum.
We're at the code-required amount of parking spaces.
Is there, is there any other room available for, I mean, you know, people are going to bring RVs or stuff in there? Is there any other room for that?
I, uh, no, we, we didn't plan for RVs or trailers or anything like that. I think that that would be a condition of, of being a resident in this particular, uh, this particular building, that that wouldn't be allowed on, on the parking lot premises, so. So I, I don't, I don't, I don't see that, but we're, we're providing what is, is code-required, and if there's a requirement by the commission that we need to provide more parking, we can certainly negotiate that and figure out what that looks like in terms of a, a reasonable amount of extra parking.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yeah, Mr. Chair, I don't have any questions for.
Okay, thank you.
For our staff.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks. So how close, um, are they, uh, to being annexed into the city of Boise?
I would say they're probably about a mile away. Um, so the city of Boise, um, at city limits is probably near Cole and Lake Hazel, and so they're about a mile away from that, so maybe a little bit less than a mile, so probably three-quarters of a mile to a mile.
So the community center, that whole conversation, was that, that wasn't Ada County that did that, was that City Boise?
City of Boise and their requirements of plan, they have basically kind of two types of centers. They have a, a community activity center, which is Lake Hazel and Five Mile, and that's kind of where your grocery store anchor is, you know, that's a lot of mixed use. And then the neighborhood activity center's basically a smaller center, so that's more activity center that's really serves the immediate neighborhood, so that would be maybe, you know, be kind of multi-family, you know, maybe a coffee shop, you know, you know, smaller commercial uses or office uses along with multi-family would be kind of where that would encompass the neighborhood activity center.
So, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Well, I'll go, wait until you close the public hearing.
Okay, I hear no for the testimony. I will close the public hearing on, um, application 202102852ZCDAMSP.
And we got all the exhibits in?
Do we have all the exhibits in? How about that, how about those Legos?
They're in there.
Well, they'll, they'll get a picture and post it in.
Okay.
All right. All right, so the application being closed, uh, what is the, uh, what's your, the board?
Well, Mr. Chair, I'll kick it off here. Um, you know, I think that this, um, is compatible for this area, um, but I'm having a pro, a hard time with a couple of things. I'm having a hard time with the requirements from ACHD. I don't know when they're going to build, number one, they're going to build that roundabout. It could be five years, it could be 10 years, and in the meantime, nobody coming out of this property is going to turn right and go an extra three miles every single time. They have to go into town and make a trip. They're going to start going left. You, you know it, we've seen it. So I would like to have, um, have this, I don't know if we want to table it or, um, or just deny it and have the applicant go back to ACHD. The other thing is really problematic for me, um, and to get the timing on that, but the other one is the special requirements that ACHD is asking for Ada County to require a cross-access easement between this, these two sites, these two parcels. So when that north develops, then they're demanding that the traffic then go into that subdivision to access it. And so this sets up a problem. If we approve this, it sets up a problem for the next development that, um, we're going to have to deal with, and so I would just as soon deal with it now. And I think I'm going to, um, uh, make a motion for denial and, and ask the applicant go back to ACHD and remove that requirement, um, and also, um, get a date for us on, so we know when that roundabout's going to be built, at least to estimate when it's going to be built. That's kind of where I'm leaning.
Mr. Chair? Yeah. Could you kind of restate again, your, the concern with the northern lot and the ACHD requirement?
Yeah, it's on page seven. On page seven, and it says, um, they're going, ACHD is requiring access to be taken from, uh, South Maple Grove Road, not Lake Hazel. They have a special recommendation to Ada County to require a cross-access easement between the, these two sites that would allow the site, when it's developed, the these two sites that would allow the site, when it's developed, the north one's developed, to have access from Oboe Avenue when that site develops. And that's, I think, what the neighbors had a problem with the first time, is you don't want all this traffic from an apartment complex going into your neighborhood to access it.
So would that be, but wouldn't the traffic be limited to the northern development, not the southern development? Are they, are you, are they saying they want the?
It would be limited to the northern development, but I can't imagine that people that would live there wouldn't use it as well. I'm just saying, by us approving this, it sets up a problem for that second lot, and I, this to me is an ACHD problem, issue that needs to be resolved before we do a final improvement, approval on it. I'm not saying I'm not going to approve it if they come back, but I'm just saying that what we have right now, I think, is problematic for the future.
So what are you asking ACHD to do?
I'm not asking ACHD to do anything. I'm asking, I'm going to make a motion to deny this application, but I'm going to recommend that the Chrysalis Architecture Company go back to ACHD and get a date on that, when that roundabout's going to be finished, and see if they can get that requirement removed.
On the cross-easement.
On the cross-easement, mhm, and then I think we would hear it again.
Would it be more appropriate to table it instead of denying it?
I'll look to staff.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I think that is definitely an option that you, you could pursue. You could, you could table it and identify those, those as topics that the applicant could go and address and bring back information.
All right. What's the table date, then, on this one?
We'll have to take a little more time.
Yeah, yeah, and it's ACHD, but, did you read that? It's strange, really strange.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Chairman, we, we would recommend tabling to the August 10th public hearing to give the applicant adequate time.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to table project 202102852ZCDAMSP to August 1st?
10th.
10th, August 10th, 2022, to have time to go back and meet with ACHD's staff to see if they can get the cross-easement recommendation, it's not even a recommendation, get that removed, and then also to be able to tell this board what ACHD, where they have this in their strategic plan to be built regards, in regards to the roundabout. And I think this board could then make a better decision.
Is there a second to the motion?
Well, before I do that, I, I mean, I want to kind of say where I'm at, and I, you know, I'm overall very supportive of us building new housing in Ada County. I mean, we're desperate for new housing. We all know what the market is, we know, all know how hard it is to find apartments, and so I'm very, you know, open to development, especially of middle-class housing that we need. And that has to be obviously balanced against the needs of the neighborhood, and obviously nobody wants more traffic, but, you know, we cannot, you know, tell people they can't build houses. It's just, we want to do it in the right way, but considering the state of the county and the, the need for the housing, I lean more towards the development side of things if it can be done the right way. So I am, I am supportive of you getting some apartments out there, but for now, I will second the motion, and, you know, hopefully we'll get you back here and get it, get something done.
All right, you've heard the motion. Is there any further discussion from amongst the Commission? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Is there anything else that needs to be brought before the Commission? Hearing none, we're in adjournment. Thank you.